Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Housing and Buildings, joint with Governmental Operations. At this time, we ask that you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach todayous. We thank you for cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Birina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I want to thank you all for joining today's hearing to discuss vacant and neglected properties in our city. We're also joined by the Committee on Governmental Operations. Thank you, Chair Ung, for joining us today. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues who are present from the City Council, Councilmember Brewer, Councilmember Felice, and potentially some members on Zoom, but we shall see. By 2030, New York City needs to produce over 500,000 units of housing, including deeply affordable and supportive housing, to keep pace with demand and stem the tide of losing residents to suburbs and other parts of the nation. As we discussed and do our part to further possible solutions to this challenge, we also need to ensure that we are utilizing the spaces and units that we have available today. Given the shortage of available housing for many New Yorkers, it may come as a surprise to hear that there are vacant lots and empty apartments throughout our city. Per HPD, there were 800 city-owned vacant lots, vacant units alone, not to mention properties that were held by private owners. In 2018, the City Council passed Local Law of 20, Local Law 29, to require that HPD conduct a census of all vacant and abandoned properties every five years, which may include zombie homes. The most recent Local Law 29 census was conducted in 2020, and a Take Root Justice Freedom of Information request reported that the census identified 2,569 likely vacant buildings and 14,372 likely vacant undeveloped lots. A big kudos to the Housing Not Warehousing Coalition, without whom these bills would not have been passed. These are vacant lots and properties that could be better used as affordable housing opportunities, rather than staying vacant for any period of time, inviting further neglect, impacting neighboring property values, falling into disrepair, and affecting neighbors. The foreclosure crisis 15 years ago also created an influx of foreclosed upon homes after predatory mortgages left many homeowners with no choice but to go through the foreclosure process. Since then, at various levels of government, we have made strides to keep track of these properties and make sure that they are not left vacant to become what are now known as zombie homes. The annual number of foreclosures has decreased by over 50% since the subprime mortgage crisis, and the state moratorium on foreclosures during the pandemic paused foreclosures throughout, through January 2022. But since that moratorium lifted, foreclosure filings are back on the rise, and the number of filings is still below, and though the number of filings is still below pre-pandemic numbers, we need to be wary of rising, of any rise in foreclosure, especially as reports of bank failings, like Signature Bank, can send shockwaves through the mortgage market and ultimately the housing system. Since the passage of the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act of 2019, there have also been reports and concerns about warehousing, empty rent stabilized apartments, that could be used to house tenants. While capturing the number of vacant rent stabilized apartments at any moment is a challenging task, and the reported numbers have varied, today, we look forward to hearing from the administration regarding how more, the more detailed findings of the 2021 Housing Vacancy Survey, or HVS, can illuminate our understanding of this issue. The HVS is conducted by the U.S. Census Bureau on behalf of our city regularly to aid our city in determining our city's vacancy rates. At our executive budget hearing, the administration testified about the twin challenges of securing stable housing for HEPS voucher holders and keeping rent stabilized housing in good repair, to which end they have proposed a new program, Unlocking Doors, aimed specifically at rehabbing vacant rent stabilized units that will rent to voucher holders. Regardless of the precise number of empty rent stabilized units, any affordable housing unit that is not being used to house New Yorker, is, New Yorkers is concern, is of concern to this committee. Any vacant unit that can be made available for renting should be leased up as quickly as possible, and New Yorkers should be placed and be able to live in safe homes. Vacant apartment units, much like vacant buildings or lots, can fall into further disrepair, impacting neighboring tenants and building-wide systems. Building owners should be taking steps to ensure their units are in good condition, whether or not they are vacant. The longer that units are unavailable and neglected, the harder it is to rehab units and bring them back into the rental market. To that end, we will hear Propose Introduction 352A, sponsored by Councilmember Wrestler, in relation to registration of vacant commercial and residential properties; Intro 195A, sponsored by Councilmember Rivera, in relation to the inspection of unoccupied dwelling units that may be affecting the health and safety of adjacent residents. And additionally, as we continue, this is the partnership part, as we continue to confront the housing crisis, this council has repeatedly called for increased capital investment to the tune of $4 billion annually for the production and preservation of affordable and supportive housing, including permanently affordable models like community land trusts. One response we have heard from the administration is that more flexibility is needed in the HPD and HDC's financing authority. And to that end, we are hearing Resolution Number 563, sponsored by me, calling on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.2985 in relation to the Housing Affordability Resilience Energy Efficiency Investment Act, who, of 2023, also formerly known as Affordability Plus. Lastly, we will be hearing Intro Number 743 jointly with Government Operations, chaired by Councilmember Ung and the bill sponsored by Councilmember Salamanca, in relation to requiring certain city employees to identify themselves during encounters with the public. I'd like to thank my staff, San Cárdenas, Kadim Robinson, and my district team, as well as Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Taylor Zaloni, Mark Chen, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dan Krue, Brooke Fry, and Reese Herota. I will now pass it to Chair Ung to say a few words.
Good afternoon. I'm City Councilmember Sandra Ung, Chair of the Committee of Governmental Operations. I want to thank everyone for planning and participating in this hearing about vacant and neglected properties. I want to thank my co-chair, Councilmember Sanchez, and her staff for all their hard work in putting this hearing together. I'd like to welcome my colleague, who have joined us today, Councilmember Hanif. In addition to the oversight and the bills already discussed by Chair Sanchez, we'll also be hearing Intro 743, sponsored by Councilmember Salamanca, which is being heard by the Government Operations Committee. This bill will require that city employees who can issue summonses or notices of violation when questioning people provide a business card with identifying information upon request. If a business card is not available, employees could instead provide a handwritten card or provide identity information verbally. The NYPD already has a similar requirement under the Right to Know Act, and this law will expand the identification requirements to cover employees who question their persons in their employee's official capacity. I'm hopeful that this bill will help to provide accountability for city employees that issue summonses or notices of violation and transparency for those New Yorkers that receive such notices. I look forward to discussing this bill in greater detail with the administration. And with that, I'd like to thank the members of public, as well as the representatives for all the agencies who come to testify today. I want to thank Mark Chen, Taylor Zaloni, Andrew Born, Jose Conde, CJ Murray, Erica Kong, for the central staff for their work in putting this hearing together. Finally, I'd like to thank my own chief of staff, Isaiah Hart, and my communications director, Shane Miller, for their assistance. And I'll turn it back over to Chair Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Chair Ung. I'd also like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Aviles, Rivera, Hanif, Carr, Abreu, and Dinowitz. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Rivera for remarks about her legislation.
Thank you so much, and I just want to say how proud I am of this body and of my colleagues and to align myself with your comments and your remarks. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Representative for District 2. I want to thank Chair Sanchez again for the opportunity to speak briefly about my bill, Intro 195, that will be heard at today's hearing, and for chairing this very important hearing at a time where we really needed to have this conversation. I want to thank all of the advocates who will also be testifying today, including advocates and neighbors from District 2, a community with a long history of activism, particularly around housing, and that has always stood up to ensure that we are moving social change along, positive social change, and realizing the impact that that has on families everywhere. The purpose of Intro 195 is to create rules to protect tenants living in buildings with warehoused units. And until we end warehousing for good, this is, at the very least, what families deserve, protection from their representatives and their government. In the middle of a housing crisis, tens of thousands of apartments are reported to be vacant, leaving families without homes and creating unsafe conditions for neighbors. No matter what the number is, the number that you'll hear today or that you've read in the paper, it is clear from advocacy in my community and beyond that there is warehousing going on that is keeping habitable apartments off the market. Vacant units may subject surrounding occupants to dangers posed by vermin, fire hazard, garbage accumulation, water leaks, gas leaks, insufficient protection from cold, insufficient protection against fire and mold. Additionally, when not properly secured against break-in vacant units may subject occupants to increased likelihood of theft and violent crime. This legislation would require landlords to keep all unoccupied dwelling units in good repair, allow tenants to call 311 to report issues in vacant apartments, and require a 12-point inspection of problem vacant apartments to ensure units are secured against potential dangers to other residents in that building. I want to thank you again for the time and for hearing this bill, and to all the advocates in the room, and to the administration for being here today to answer our questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rivera. I will now turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chairs Sanchez and Chair Ung, and members of the Housing and Buildings and Operations Committees. I am Lucy Joffe, Assistant Commissioner for Housing Policy at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I am joined by my colleagues, Dr. Elizabeth Gahmer, HPD's Chief Research Officer, and Anne Marie Santiago, Deputy Commissioner for Enforcement and Neighborhood Services. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to discuss the topic of vacant and neglected properties, as well as the legislation being heard today. Almost exactly one year ago, HPD shared with the committee the 2021 New York City Housing and Vacancy Selected Initial Findings. Based on the requirements of state law, the council considered those data apologies, technology shift. Based on the requirements of state law, the council considered those data and other available information and determined that New York City remains in a state of housing emergency. As in all previous cycles of the NYC HVS, the only survey specifically designed to measure vacancy in New York City, we reported a net rental vacancy rate. The citywide net rental vacancy rate was 4.54%. Of the 3,644,000 total homes in New York City, there were 103,200 vacant units available for rent across all types of rental housing. That vacancy rate only considers units that are actually available for rent. This is a critically important distinction that has been misunderstood in recent months. Because of the importance of our rent stabilized stock, and because it has, in particular, become a focal point in the discussion of vacant units, I want to focus there for a moment. Of the 3,644,000 total homes in New York City, just over 1 million are rent stabilized. That means roughly 1/3 of our total housing stock is rent stabilized. 4.57% of the rent stabilized units, or approximately 45,970 units, were vacant. This only includes vacant units that were on the market and available for rent. This represents less than 1.5% of our total housing stock. Of the more than 1 million rent stabilized units total, 42,860 vacant rent stabilized units were off the market and not available for rent, equivalent to just over 4% of all rent stabilized units. This figure is not included in the calculation of the net rental vacancy rate. This category includes units that are under renovation, those that are rented but not yet occupied, and a number of other reasons. This total category of units, those off the market for any reason, also represents less than 1.5% of our total housing stock. The vacant and available and vacant and not available data represent a snapshot in time. These do not necessarily represent long-term vacancies. Only a subset of the units that are vacant and not available could be described as warehoused units, which are not currently on the market and which the owner does not intend to put back on the market. While the vacancy rate is incredibly important, both in terms of its legal implications and as an indicator of the health of our housing market, we shared a number of findings from the 2021 NYC HVS, which reveal areas of significant concern about the state of low-cost housing available to low- and moderate-income New Yorkers here in the city that we should be taking very seriously. The median rent for all rental apartments was $1,500. The median rent for all units available for rent was $2,750. This distinction and the wide gap between those numbers means that most people currently living in a typical New York City apartment, who end up needing to move, could be looking at units that cost over $1,000 more per month than they are currently paying. Digging into these numbers should raise more alarm bells. The net rental vacancy rate was less than 1% for units renting for less than $1,500. That's fewer than 10,000 units that were available to rent in this price range when our 2021 NYC HVS was in the field. This is the lowest vacancy rate among units in this price range that we've seen in more than 30 years of the NYC HVS. Looking at this another way, the median rent of all units that were available for rent was $2,750. To be able to afford that typical unit that was available for rent, a New York City household would have to earn at least $110,000 a year, more than double what most New York City renters earned in 2021. It's important to remember that $2,750 is the median of units available for rent in 2021. That means that half of all available units were renting for more than that. Since the time we presented both the vacancy rate and these data about the state of low-cost housing in the city, these data have been misconstrued and compared incorrectly to other data sources. This debate is unfortunately not grounded in the data. We do not have a lot of vacant units. We do not have a lot of low-cost vacant units. The dearth of units available for rent on any given day in our city is one of the main problems in our housing market. This is why it is incredibly difficult, especially for low- and moderate-income New Yorkers, to find a new home they can afford if they have to move. That shortage puts further upward pressure on the rents of available apartments. Some, however, have specifically argued that there are significant numbers of low-rent, poor-quality rent stabilized units that are being held off the market for long periods of time. This is incorrect. Of the 42,860 rent stabilized units that were not available for rent in 2021, 12%, 5,060 units, had already been rented, but the tenant had not yet moved in. 24%, that's 10,100 units, were awaiting or undergoing renovation at the time of the interview. Significantly, these units had not been vacant for a long time. We measured that, too, typically only for one month or less. Of these 10,100 units, the vast majority were being renovated at the time of the interview, 8,810 units. These units had a median legal rent of $2,036. Only 1,290 rent stabilized units were empty and awaiting renovation, which data shows generally happens very quickly. Most of these 1,290 units had been vacant for less than a month at the time of the survey. These units had a median legal rent of $2,676. 11%, 4,740 units, had been vacant for 12 months or longer, with no other reason given for why they were off the market. The median legal rent for these units was $3,233. That's more than double the median rent of all rent stabilized units. It is also higher than the median cost of even the market-rate rentals that were currently available for rent at the time of the survey. These are not homes that would be affordable to low-income New Yorkers. If these units were to come online, a New York City household would have to earn at least $130,000 to afford that home. When we drill down to rent stabilized units that had been vacant and off the market for 12 months or more, were in need of repairs, and had a low legal rent, which we measured as less than $1,000, there were just 2,477 units. That's less than 1/4 of 1% of all rent stabilized units in New York City. In the context of our entire housing supply, that's less than 1/10 of 1%. We need more housing, especially low-cost and affordable housing, to alleviate the pressure in our housing market. We need to reduce the obstacles so we can move New Yorkers into available housing more quickly. To do that, and to ensure that we have housing of all types in all neighborhoods across the city, we need continued partnership at both the local and state levels. With the state legislative session ending on Thursday, we urgently need action from our partners in Albany to enact a housing agenda to allow us to build and preserve more low-cost and affordable housing efficiently, effectively, and equitably. We need to create a new construction tax incentive, as well as a new reformed J-51 program to facilitate commercial and basement conversions, and the Housing Affordability Resiliency Energy Efficiency Investment Act, and we are grateful for the council's support in hearing Resolution 563 here today. The current housing crisis demands that together we achieve the goals set out in the Housing and Get Stuff Built blueprints and Where We Live NYC, our Fair Housing Plan. We hope the council will support our push for a housing agenda in Albany. I'll turn now to the legislation being heard today. Introduction 195A proposes to create a new enforcement process targeted to apartments that are not occupied. As we've discussed in depth today, we have very few vacant apartments in the city. The number of vacant and low-quality units represents a minuscule fraction of our housing market. In our experience, units that are vacant are generally not a hazard to neighboring tenants, and in many cases, many cases are vacant because an owner is in the process of renovating or correcting conditions prior to putting the unit back on the market. In cases where conditions in vacant units are affecting the quality of occupied units, HPD's existing process will result in violations being issued, which often requires the mediation of underlying conditions, including pests and mold, which may necessitate addressing conditions in other apartments vacant or occupied. Requiring HPD to create a process focused specifically on a small percentage of the 2,500 poor-quality, low-cost units that have been vacant for 12 months or longer would divert critical resources away from HPD's enforcement, while not creating any measurable increase in the supply of safe and affordable housing. HPD does not support Intro 195A as written, but we are happy to have further conversations with the council about the best way to achieve the goals of the bill. In regards to Introduction 352A, the administration is still reviewing the amended legislation, but on initial review, we have major concerns this bill will confuse and potentially deter owners from submitting their registration, which is a system created with a specific purpose of obtaining basic contact information, so we know who owners are, can cite violations to them directly, and contact them in emergencies. As the city's affordable housing agency, we believe deeply in our agency's mission and are committed to using all of the tools at our disposal to house New Yorkers safely, stably, and affordably. Every potential home that could be brought online could house a New York City household, and that's something we take incredibly seriously. But a strategy that is focused on 1/10 of 1% of our housing market is not an effective one for housing New Yorkers and risks distracting us collectively from the really important work at hand. We are incredibly grateful for the productive work we, as an agency, have been able to do with this committee specifically and with this council broadly to address the housing needs of New Yorkers. We look forward to that continued and productive partnership. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you, thank you so much for that, for your testimony, a lot of, a lot of really interesting facts to dig in there. Before I proceed, I'm just going to hand it over to Councilmember Wrestler for introductory remarks on his legislation.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez. It's always a pleasure to be with you and Chair Ung. Appreciate both of your leadership. What is clear to me is that the city of New York does not have a handle on vacancies. And when you look at the city's data from the Housing and Vacancy Survey, to DHCR's analysis, to private landlord's analysis, to reports from brokerage firms, we have no idea how many vacant apartments there are in New York City at any given time, and we're guessing. And it's the lack of clear data that is a serious problem. We know there's a lot. We know there are tens of thousands of vacant apartments in New York City. The most recent Housing and Vacancy Survey estimated it at 88,000 vacant rent-regulated apartments in the city of New York. At a time when we have a housing crisis, when 1 in 3 families in New York City is paying a majority of their income in rent, which is utterly and totally unsustainable, but if you go up to our Chair's district in the West Bronx, a majority of tenants are paying a majority of their income in rent each and every, each and every month, which is a shame. We need to make sure that we are maximizing every single vacant apartment as quickly as possible. But it's not just about our vacant residential units, it's our commercial real estate. We know that there's been a substantial increase in commercial real estate, but we don't know how much vacant office space there is in New York City in any reliable way. We rely too much on the private sector, on the real estate industry for what they report, and it's just not quality data. We should be tracking it ourselves as the city of New York so that we can devise the right policy solutions, the right mixture of carrots and sticks, have all of the tools at our disposal, so that we can maximize each and every available space, each and every available square foot of space for families in need. At a time when the mayor is housing migrants in jails, in warehouses, in school gymnasiums, the fact that we have so many, tens of thousands of vacant units, not to mention the thousands of vacant NYCHA units in his control, the thousands of vacant supportive housing units that are in his control, it is a shame. It is an absolute shame. So we need better data. Intro 352 will help us have that data so that we can devise the policy solutions we need. Thank you very much, Chair Sanchez, and always good to see the folks at HPD.
Thank you so much, Chair Wrestler. I'd now like to hand it over to my co-chair.
Thank you. I know there's much to be discussed today, so I'll be brief about my questions. Currently, does HPD have a formal policy requiring inspectors provide identification upon request?
Thank you, Chair. Good, good afternoon. Yes, HPD inspectors are required, as part of our policy, to display their HPD ID during inspections.
Good to know. Great. And just one quick follow-up question. If someone wishes to file a complaint against a HPD inspector, what's the process for doing that?
So we do have borough offices where people can call. We do also receive complaints through 311.
And what, what would be the follow-up after that?
Depending upon the nature of the complaint, it could be reinforcing the policy with the inspector, specifically in the case that you're asking.
Excellent. Great. Thank you so much. I'll turn it back over to Chair Sanchez.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you, thank you so much. So I'll ask just a few questions and then turn it over to my colleagues before coming back, as usual. First, I just want to, want to start with the, the second page of your testimony where you really dig into the numbers that are born out of the Housing Vacancy Survey administered in, in 2021. My first question is, when is the next Housing Vacancy Survey coming?
We appreciate that question. We are currently in the field for the 2023 NYC HVS. If any New Yorkers receive a knock at their door, we surely hope that they will answer and participate in this really important survey.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, y'all heard that. Please open your doors and talk to the friendly folks from the Census Bureau who are coming around to ask about your housing conditions. Okay, so, I mean, I, I think there, there has been a lot of debate and conversation around these numbers, and I really appreciate you all drilling down and, and sharing the insights from the Housing Vacancy Survey. Because in October of 2019, the city reported that there were 60, 60,000 rent stabilized apartments that were vacant. There have been reports of up to 90,000 units being vacant. But today, you shared some very important, I think, observations. One is that of the units that are vacant, they're, they're higher-cost rentals. Can you just expound upon that just one more time to, to delineate of the vacant units that are available versus not available? What are we looking at in terms of affordability of those available and not available units?
Sure. Thank you very much. So as you know, I serve as the head of the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey on behalf of the city and work closely with our partners at the Census Bureau, and have now done that for several cycles. I'll just reiterate, please, the 2023 is only in the field for another two, two weeks or so, so it's really very important. So thank you for your question. As my colleague, Assistant Commissioner Joffe, explained, within this universe of rent stabilized units that are not available for rent, or were not available for rent at the time of our '21 survey, 11% of them, or just under 4,700, just over 4,700, excuse me, had been vacant for 12 months or longer, with no other reason given, right? We all know that vacant, vacancies have very complicated stories, can have very complicated stories, although the vast majority of them stay on, off of the market for a very short period of time. This is a small, but very important, segment that has been empty for a longer time, but as you pointed out in your question, these are significantly more expensive than what we, I think, generally think of as the, the rent stabilized stock in New York City. So the median legal rent for these units that had been empty for 12, 12 months or more was $3,200, which is
more was $3,200, which is very, very, very high legal rent.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I, I will often sound like a broken record talking about how the housing crisis does not impact all New Yorkers equally, and this is, this is just one fact, one way to look at the numbers which bears that out, right? That there is a severe shortage of the low-cost rentals, but not a severe shortage at all of, of the higher-cost rentals. So thank you for that. So just taking a step back, you know, we're, we're hearing legislation today around registering vacant apartments and vacant commercial spaces, but we do have the Housing Vacancy Survey. So just from, from the agency's perspective, what is, what is and what are the most legitimate sources of information that we have today? And are there any gaps in information that you see from where you sit?
Thank you for that question. The New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey has been the gold standard for decades. We do it in partnership with the Census Bureau, as you all are aware. We believe that this is, it is the only survey specifically designed to measure vacancy in New York City. We are extremely confident in this data and rely on it heavily, both for engaging and providing as data for this council and making the very important determination every several years about whether or not we remain in a, in a state of housing emergency, also for policymaking. It's used by experts across the city as well as nationally. This is a data source that is incredibly rich, and we are incredibly lucky for the legacy of this data. It, there, our data was misconstrued by a number of sources this past fall. It was compared to data sources that are not measuring the same thing, and we have never suggested that this, that we have insufficient data to weigh in on this topic. We are very confident in the numbers we presented today.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue, but I, I wanna just recognize my, my colleague, Councilmember Caban, who is here, and I'm gonna turn it over to colleagues for questions, and then I'll come back. Councilmember Brewer?
One of the questions I have, does your number include the tenant interim lease? Because I just went to a meeting in Harlem. I mean, there's thousands of units that are not occupied. Does it include the till numbers?
So the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey includes every kind of housing as part of our sample. Our statutory mandate to measure the net rental vacancy rate likewise includes all forms of rental housing, so that would include...
Well, some of them are rental and some of them are co-op, so that would include some, but not all of the, of the Article 11s, right? Would not include Article 11?
It includes both sides of that. Our sample is based on every residential address in the city. So for our net rental vacancy rate calculation, it only includes vacant and available for rent, or rental and occupied, which, some of which, as you pointed out, are in condos or co-ops or even...
Article 11s, yeah.
Right? So the, but the numbers that we presented today do not exclude any class of property, but the numbers that Assistant Commissioner Joffe presented are specific to rent-stabilized units.
Okay. And the, does, Commissioner, does that include rent control? Because there's a difference between rent stabilized and rent controlled.
A very important distinction. Thank you for making that. Rent controlled is not counted in our vacancy rate because there are no vacant rent-controlled units, right? So it is, of course, a very important part of the data we collect about our city's housing, and we have watched the, the supply of rent-controlled units very closely for many decades. But when a tenant leaves a rent-controlled unit, it is no longer rent-controlled and therefore cannot be vacant in that same status.
Okay. I mean, the reason we want, there's two reasons we want this bill. First of all, how do you, I know, how do you actually, do you go field visit, meaning that you go knocking on doors to see where there are vacancies? Is that correct with your, with the Housing Vacancy Survey?
Yes, we have actually quite lengthy protocol that we use, and we do this consistently for every single one of our sampled units in a given survey cycle.
So why wouldn't you want another sort of backup, which would be the tenants who live in the building, to also be able to tell you or tell an app or 311 or Dashboard or some way, which is what our bill calls for, to be able to also back up what you're stating? That you stated 47,000 for 12 months or more. I, I mean, most owners don't let people in. So how in the world would you know all of this?
So what we do is, and it's very important, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to explain our process for gathering the data that we do. It is incredibly important for the validity of the data that we share with all of you and that our friends and colleagues use to make sure that we do this exactly the same way for every unit in this sample.
I understand. I know apples to apples, I got it.
So the majority of the information that we collect is from in-person interviews with, and, and information about a specific unit that has been sampled.
And that's with the manager of the building?
No, it's with current occupants, one adult respondent if the unit is occupied. If it is a vacant unit, or rather, not an occupied unit, then it could be with a number of informants. Generally, it's with the owner or the managing agent.
Okay. I mean, with all due respect, we all know that the owners and the managers may not tell you the correct information, which is why we are trying so hard to get the data either to back you up or to say this is not correct, which is why we want to have data as part of our legislation.
But it's why we have exhaustive processes.
This is a very contentious issue. Landlords and tenants, they don't always tell the truth, with all due respect.
Councilmember, with respect, we have been doing this for decades. We completely agree with you.
Yes, but you know the difference? Can I just say, 2019, that, I thank God for the state that they passed that bill to keep us stabilized. Thank God. However, it has created, understandably, I mean, I have a lot of friends that own buildings. They hate 2019, that bill. They're gonna change their story a little bit because of that bill. That's not decades, that's fairly recent.
We underwent a massive redesign in 2021. We believe that we, I am not a survey methodologist, but I am incredibly lucky to be working with one of the best in the country. We are on the leading edge of many of the Census Bureau's processes, and we appreciate and share your concerns. It's why we have exhaustive processes for ensuring that any unit that we are considering to be occupied is occupied and that we have extensive information about that unit.
What's occupied is...
Any unit is, that is vacant, that we have double and triple-checked that in as many ways as possible.
Okay.
I will also add that we...
We're also gonna disagree. Go ahead.
I, I will add that one of the things that we take very seriously as part of our mandate is not only quality assurance and verification, which, as Lucy just explained, we have multiple processes for that, but that also that we combine use of various secondary sources of information, as you sort of suggested. We go through a very, very careful process for integrating those records, and I honestly am not certain that a point-in-time registration would help us to be more accurate than what we're doing in person.
I, I know my time is, let me just ask about this rent, this 3,200, therefore it's not worth fighting, we should just leave the vacant units, we're not gonna get affordable housing out of it. That's what you're saying?
No, Councilmember, we're not saying that.
Then what are you saying?
We're saying very clearly that any possible unit that could house a New York City household is a potential opportunity that we take incredibly seriously, but that we don't think an investment in a strategy that relies on a tiny slice of our housing market is going to solve the broader problem that all of us are really committed to. We want to make sure, this has become a bit of a distraction in the press over the last few months. We want to make sure that we can collectively work together on really high-impact strategies.
Okay. That, we disagree. I don't know what the number is, 4,700, 25, 47,020? I mean, we don't know. You have a number, others have other numbers, but whatever it is, I just don't understand why we're not doing everything we can to get them rented. Even, I was with the mayor this morning, he's talking about putting people into these apartments, because he does have, we all have, a housing challenge. 3,200 is manageable with a couple of vouchers and two bedrooms and families. We're at a crisis. Put two families in there with two vouchers and you got your 3,200 median rent. So I'm saying this is affordable housing, and if it's stabilized, it only goes up by rent guidelines board, and half the time it is stabilized even though the owner tells you it's not.
Councilmember, in pointing out the high rents, we want to correct confusion that there are lots of low-cost units that owners are not putting back on the market because they can't afford to. That's different from saying that we, we intend to and are pursuing as many strategies as we can to bring units back on the market.
So what would be your strategy to put these back on the market?
I reckon, well, I recognize that there's limited time available allotted to each council member. We recognize that you're a, a significant partner in this work. The numbers that we're presenting today are incredibly important and have very significant legal implications, so we want to make sure that we're walking through them collectively and in as much detail as possible. So we're here to answer any of those questions. To the extent that there is a unit, an owner who has not been able to put a, a unit back online for any number of reasons, we have a wide range of preservation programs, as you're aware of.
I know every one of them, and it's not gonna work for these units.
We're committed to finding as many solutions as possible to these units.
Thank you.
We do want to keep in mind the scale of the problem we're talking about.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Brewer, and, and I think that that's a, it's a really, really important question that you are asking, because to me, when I hear about the shortage of low-cost housing versus the, not as much of a shortage of high-cost housing, you know, that to me is like, okay, we have to make sure that we are building more low-cost housing, providing vouchers to get people into affordable homes, and it could be those higher-cost units. But it's, it's really, you know, it's, it's really this, this notion that has been spread around that rent stabilization is bad for the city of New York, and it's bad because it keeps rents low, and those low rents are not supporting the operation, like, we can't rent, there are building owners who are saying, we're not gonna rent out units because we're not earning enough money from them. And I think what HPD is saying today is that that is a very, 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 very minuscule portion of what is happening, right? And, and I, and I just wanna kind of focus attention on that, that the low-cost rent-stabilized unit, universe that are vacant, very, very tiny. So when, last night, many of the folks who are here in this room today, many of us who were in the Bronx testifying before the rent guidelines board, when we testify in that space, we're talking about no increases because it's a lie that, that landlords are, you know, not able to maintain their properties because of these low-cost rentals, right? That is a myth. That is 2,477 units potentially, is what I'm hearing HPD say today. HPD is, did I mischaracterize that?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to, to other colleagues who have questions here. Thank you so much. So Councilmember Rivera, you're up next.
Thank you so much for your testimony and, and for being here, and I appreciate your, I don't know, your attitude, I guess, towards your testimony, which is that you believe in what you presented. I, I find, I find some of, some of the, the content here, clearly, I, I mean, I disagree with it, but to, to call this issue a distraction, I don't, I don't agree with that. I feel like we're finally getting attention on an issue that's prevalent, that's been a challenge and a problem for many, many tenants, and to say that a lot of vacant units are, and owners typically in the process of renovating or correcting conditions, yeah, a lot of times that construction is also harassment and is also pushing tenants to the point where they feel cornered by market forces, by increases in everything in terms of, of, of costs and services. So calling it a tiny slice when many of the people here are, are fighting for crumbs, I just don't think that that was appropriate, but I understand where you're coming from and believing in your data. I also think that you're the type of agency that would want as much data as possible, and I think that it's the council's responsibility to talk about these issues in a nuanced way. So as maybe insignificant or as trivial as, as you think that this one-tenth of a 1% might be, I have a hard time understanding the administration's sort of broader focus on how to address the housing crisis. So sometimes I think it pays to be nuanced. My questions. Has HPD had internal conversations over the years about the dangers posed by vacant units, and have there been plans to support tenants in reporting issues with vacant units?
So I appreciate both your perspective, the feedback, and your question, Councilmember. We, I am the Assistant Commissioner for Housing Policy within the policy team. We have an entire research infrastructure. We agree that living in the nuance is quite important, and we view our responsibility to provide data about what's going on in the market as critical to our partnership with the council.
All right, before you continue, since my time, just, just, let me just ask you. So I asked you the internal conversations about supporting tenants in reporting issues with vacant units. I'd also like to know whether, in terms of those conditions that are reported, does lead come up, lead abatement? Has that also been something that landlords have reached out to your administration about? And about what percentage of landlords with the rent-stabilized units in their portfolio have come to HPD seeking assistance on renovations?
Great. As I noted in my testimony, every single potential vacant unit is an opportunity that we take incredibly seriously for housing New Yorkers. Nothing we presented today was intended to undermine that, and we are working with the council, hopefully with our state partners, to use as many tools, to make our tools as effective and efficient as possible, and to make sure that we actually have what we need to address the problems that exist. That being said, there are very few vacant units available in the city. It is a defining characteristic of our housing market.
I understand, and I just wanna say, for sake of time, you've repeated that, and that's why I started my questioning, appreciating the fact that you said the same thing five times, because consistency is key. But I would like for you to answer the questions, because you're gonna hear from tenants, maybe not you, because maybe you're gonna go back to your offices, but at least people on your staff are gonna have to listen to these tenants and hear the stories of what they're going through next to these units. So if you could just answer these questions, I would really appreciate it. I do have your testimony, not only did I read it, but I heard you read it. So can you answer that about internal conversations over the years about the dangers posed by vacant units? Have there been plans to support tenants in reporting issues with vacant units? And in terms of landlords coming to HPD seeking assistance on renovations, can you go into detail about the support? We know about unlocking doors, for example, which is a new initiative by the mayor, and is lead abatement a concern for these landlords? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I will try to answer those questions in, in order, but you can stop me. In terms of vacant units and conditions there, as you know, the city has invested a lot in harassment as the issue, right? Not necessarily the vacant unit, but whether that harassment is occurring because there's illegal construction, or there's dust because of construction, or there's harassment in terms of HPD types of conditions, no heat and hot water, pests, mold. So there has been a, a big investment over the past few years in that specifically, targeting not specifically vacant units, but targeting harassment and the different tactics that a property owner can use to harass tenants. Similarly, on lead, there has been a big push, and we had a recent hearing on lead, and talked a lot about turnover, which is the lead in vacant units, and the efforts that the city has been making in terms of issuing violations for failure to conduct turnover activities, and certainly we can provide you information that was discussed at that hearing if you, you know, want more detail about turnover in particular. In terms of lead and resources for property owners, we do have a program at HPD specifically to support property owners regarding lead-based paint. We did not bring that data here today, but again, we have information on what program, what the program has spent, what the owners request when they come in, and that can be provided to the council, you know, at some time.
Thank you, Chairs, for, for all of the time. Just, I wanna make sure that you, so you have plans to support tenants in reporting issues with vacant units. Do you depend on 311 for this data? And that's my last question to the Chairs. Thanks again.
What we recommend is tenants report conditions in their units. We come to their unit, we observe that the condition is being caused, and a lot of times, especially regarding pests or mold, the cause is somewhere else, not necessarily in the, in the tenant's unit. And whether that's an occupied apartment or whether that's a vacant apartment, the requirement of the violation is to trace the source of the condition and address that condition, and so that's really how we deal with those conditions. In cases of harassment, you know, we have our Tenant Harassment Protection Task Force. Tenants can reach us through the mayor's office to protect tenants as well, and we will deal with those situations as they arise and they're brought to our attention.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Rivera. And, and this is, this is an important line of questioning. There are some harrowing stories that we've heard and that you'll hear today if you, if you're able to, to stay or, or watch online after your portion, and they're, they're about ongoing leaks, ongoing conditions that are coming from, stemming from an empty unit, and it's being used to harass. So you just talked about, Deputy Commissioner, you just talked about... So you just talked about, Deputy Commissioner, you just talked about the requirement to trace the source condition for mold or, you know, certain violations. So how often, do you have a sense of how often the source of a condition has been an adjacent vacant unit or vacant unit within the property?
I don't have a, I don't have a number on that, Councilmember.
Is that something that could be discernible through the data as it stands today?
When the inspector issues the violation, he doesn't know at the, or she, doesn't know at the time that they issued the violation whether or not the source of the condition is a vacant unit or an occupied unit. So we do not track that information.
Would it be useful, I think it would be useful, our colleagues think it would be useful, to require a look at whether it is an adjacent or nearby vacant unit that is causing the problem?
Oftentimes, the inspector may not, in any situation, a property owner is the best judge of where the condition is being caused from. The inspector is not, the inspector is not a plumber, for example, or a pest management expert in terms of identifying where the condition would arise. Certainly, if there is a condition of harassment in the building, where again, there are a lot of vacant units, and the tenants feel that the tenant harassment is being generated from those units, you know, we encourage the referrals to us for our tenant harassment unit to go out and take a look at those buildings. And in those cases, we drill down more specifically to deal with the property owner on the source of the condition.
Got it. And just one more on this before I turn it over to Councilmember Abreu, who is not here, so I will turn it over, oh, who is here, sorry? All very self over there. Before I turn it over to Councilmember Abreu, is, today, if a tenant within a building is, you know, complaining to 311 in conversation with HPD inspectors, what is the inspector's protocol if the tenant says specifically, I believe that the source of the issue is coming from a vacant unit?
The inspector will issue the violation, and again, in following up with those violations in cases where we do, where it's an emergency repair, we will make every attempt to get into that unit or contact the property owner.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. Councilmember Abreu?
Thank you, Chair Sanchez. I'm particularly disturbed by the fact that we don't have data on when you're tracing the source of a violation, that you don't know, or the number of how many of that is coming from within the unit or in an unoccupied vacant warehouse unit. Specifically, when we are being told by tenants themselves, who by the way, do know best about the conditions in their apartments, we are being told by them that these conditions are coming from other apartments. I myself have walked through different units in the Upper West Side and Park West Village. We have some, we have Patricia Loffman here and Sue Sussman from the Upper West Side. I've walked myself into these vacant apartments, and we know warehousing is happening. It's happening in the hundreds in the Upper West Side. I'm just particularly disturbed that we don't have that data, and I've, there are three adjectives that really bothered me today: confusion, distraction, the data is misconstrued. Then why not get the data? So that we're all on the same page, and we're not calling into question this information. And that data should be driven from tenants, not from owners alone. Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Abreu. So next up, we're gonna go to Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez, and thank you for being here with us. I am still digesting the dataset, and from what we've been hearing directly from constituents and tenants, and also prospective tenants who are in dire need of deeply affordable housing and dignified housing that have repairs made, to now seeing this data, just trying to assess and understand really how to take this all in. I am curious to build on Councilmember Brewer around the almost 4,800 units that have been vacant for 12 months or longer, to better understand your team's strategy around how to get those units on the market, and what are the conversations with the landlords? Like, what is the relationship that you all have with these vacant units? Would like to understand that a little bit more, and then I have a couple more questions.
I'll begin maybe by just helping to clarify our process for this, and also the ways that we can use our New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey data. So we do this and have done this now for many decades in partnership with the Census Bureau. We take that job very seriously to make sure that we're asking the right questions, we're double and triple checking, we're classifying things in a way that makes sense, and providing data to you, your colleagues, as well as the general public. For these particular units that we've identified here, as with all of the information that we collect through the U.S. Census Bureau, it is for purposes of information and statistics only. And there are federal laws to protect the privacy of particularly the tenants in these units and living in these buildings, and ensure that none of the information can be used for anything other than purely the research purpose it was collected for. That means that we can't provide a list of these units for other activities, for recruitment into a program. I am not able to, nor is the Census Bureau able to disclose particular addresses or landlords. So we can talk more broadly about these types of units, but I just wanted to be clear about these, this count of units that we're talking about doesn't really produce a list where we can do anything else about that.
Got it. So this is, these are numbers based off of the evaluation, the survey collected, and then there isn't, even without articulating, putting out names of buildings, landlords, you're not driving any campaign to say like, everyone has a role in ensuring that vacancies are filled. There is, is there something that is like, not calling names and identifying locations, but something to really drive like, almost 5,000 units that have been sitting around, even if it's not deeply affordable, but they are empty units?
Thank you for that question. So, right, so these are some, two separate issues, right? Whether or not we can, what information we can reveal from people who share their very deeply personal information with us through the survey, and then the city's response to it. We've mentioned the fact that the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey underwent a very significant redesign in 2021. That's not accidental. There, a lot of data that we have shared today and recently is data we've been collecting for decades. Some of it is new, because there are things we wanted to know more about and figured the council would want to understand better, and it gives us really good perspective, in particular after 2019, about ways that our housing market has or has not changed. So we have emphasized the significance of this data because of the legal implications and the confusion that has happened in the press over numbers, because those numbers do matter for the legal significance of our system, and that's really important. But it doesn't suggest that there aren't really important policy responses that we need to work on together now that we have some of this data, right? So if we're talking about any individual tenant's circumstances like harassment, there's a really important harassment discussion that we need to be having. If we're talking about the potential of units, unoccupied vacant units causing harm to other tenants, we want to make sure that we have an infrastructure for that, and we believe that we have the right systems in place for that. To the extent that there are some number of vacant units that could be put back on the market safely, that they could represent affordable housing, we are deeply committed to that. We share this council's goal of wanting to ensure that there is safe, quality, affordable housing in neighborhoods across every borough across the city. To the extent that this represents one small sliver of that strategy, we're all in to work with you all on this. What we want to be really clear on is it can't be our primary strategy. It's not a silver bullet, and there's a lot that we need to work on with the council, with our partners at the state legislature, to make sure that we have the tools that we need to build and preserve low-cost and affordable housing. There are certainly short-term measures that we can take and are taking, because everything is on the table when we're talking about the extent of the crisis that our city is currently in, and we take that really seriously. But investing long-term in $3,000 units is not what anyone wants to see. So we want to make sure that we're doing a little bit of all of the things that we need, including building more low-cost and affordable housing across the city. We take very seriously that the chair has in recent months said that she's going to ask us every time we show up about what, about building housing for the constituents who live in her district, and I know many of you feel that as well. We want to make sure that we are focused every day on ensuring that we have low-cost and affordable units for, as, for the New Yorkers who are in need. Thank you.
Chair, I have a few more questions. The Brooklyn Borough President, Antonio Reynoso, recently proposed some city-level policies that have the potential to open up tens of thousands of vacant apartments that are currently enlisted or unleased to those who are experiencing homelessness, with deference given to those who've been in city shelters the longest. Under the proposal, the city would, one, add the arrival of migrants as an emergency under the administrative code, two, direct the mayor and city to lease market apartments for housing homeless families toward creating space in our shelter for new arrivals, and three, require landlords to prioritize renting to the city at the market rate to alleviate the burden, and four, ban the refusal to rent apartments to the city during an emergency crisis. Has the administration taken a position on the Borough President's proposal?
We don't have a position on the particular proposal, but we want to come to the table with everyone who has great solutions, so we look forward to continuing conversations around all possible ways that we can house the many New Yorkers who are in need of safe, stable, and affordable housing.
That's great. I support the Borough President's involvement and really want to make an effort to show that this is an all-hands-on-deck effort.
Yes, we need more people to realize the extent of the crisis that we're in, the fact that we need more low-cost and affordable units, and so we're really glad that the council in particular is helping bringing attention, helping bring attention to that issue.
And then, on the topic of transitioning people out of shelter into apartments, HPD has at least a 10% set aside for formerly homeless folks in their developments. Are you able to share how many of those units are currently vacant?
I don't have data on that specifically today, but just like in the rest of the housing market, in our housing, vacancy is incredibly low. We are constantly focused, and it's been a particular priority in this administration, on getting New Yorkers into housing as quickly as possible as well. So we are doing everything we can to reduce all of the times that things take, so we don't have a lot of vacant units generally.
And then, are you able to provide an update on the converted office space HERC in Bushwick?
I'm not. I'm here to talk today about permanent housing, but we'd be, I know that there's going to be a hearing later in the month, and I would defer to my colleagues that are working on this issue specifically. We'd be happy to follow up and/or at that hearing.
Great, yeah, this is just a curiosity as to the new role HPD is playing with the HERC administration, and wanting to know if you can share maybe a little bit more about just identifying these office spaces, like, is there like a list that you all have put together in identifying either the respite centers or what's happening in Bushwick?
We'd be follow, happy to follow up with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hanif, and thank you for your responses. I now want to turn it over to Councilmember Ressler. Look at how nice I am, y'all, right? I just, y'all go first, and then I go.
You are very kind, Chair Sanchez. We appreciate the generosity of spirit in giving us all a chance to jump in. And I do want to echo your sentiment that the Housing and Vacancy Survey is a great resource for New York City. So appreciate everyone at HPD that works on it and the thoughtfulness that's behind it. And I think that there are, but I will admit, I'm disappointed and frankly surprised by some of the characterizations we've heard from HPD today. To call the focus on nearly 90,000 vacant residential rent-regulated units a distraction is odd to me. HPD produces, I don't know, 9,000 housing starts a year, affordable housing, give or take, we're talking about a number that's 10 times that amount. I get that some of these units under construction, some of them are on the market, there is some healthy turnover that happens. But as we all know, the prices of housing in New York City have skyrocketed. We've seen double-digit rent increases just year over year in Brooklyn, Queens, Manhattan. Average rents in Manhattan are well over $4,000 a month for a vacant, for a median apartment. So when we have, when someone has a rent-regulated unit, they hold on to it as long as they can, especially an affordable one. One out of nine of these units are vacant, right, are not occupied right now, at least according to your most recent Housing and Vacancy Survey. That's a significant number that, excuse me, one of 11, I misspoke. One of 11 units are not occupied right now of our rent-regulated housing. What is that telling us? And why are we not getting, seeing more of those units activated more swiftly? I find it very disconcerting. You've leaned in to the data point that a small number are rented out at under $1,000, under $1,000 a month, 2,500 out of the 90,000 vacant units. But how many vacant units rent between $1,000 and $1,500 a month? How many vacant units rent between $1,000 and $2,000 a month, according to the HCR rules? Do you have those data points for us today?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Could I actually direct that question to the Housing and Vacancy Survey?
Okay, but before Dr. Gomer answers, we still call her Dr. Gomer, not the Housing and Vacancy Survey, despite the way it may sound today.
I didn't have your name at my disposal. I apologize.
But I appreciate your surprise. There are significant legal implications to our survey for our entire rent stabilization system. Adding together numbers that are not technically supposed to be added together has implications...
To me, I'm adding together the numbers of whether there's somebody in the unit that's living there or there's somebody that isn't.
And there are significant legal implications for our entire system that we take really seriously.
I do too.
So I'm trying to make sure that every opportunity we have to clarify that confusion, that we take it, because it is incredibly important that no one is confused that those numbers are different.
Sorry, I, Deputy Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner, if I may, and Councilmember Ressler, I promise I will give you this time back. I just want to focus us on 45,970, because that is the number. That is the number of units that are available, they're vacant and available. And then the other units that are, that are not, that are vacant and unavailable, those are the ones that they mentioned are under construction, maybe it's just today, but tomorrow they're going to be rented, so they shouldn't be counted in the survey. It's important, the 45,970 number that gets us to a 4.57% vacancy rate in the city of New York, we have to get those, we have to figure out how to get those online, right? But I just want to focus us on that, because that's what the 60,000 and 90,000 number that we've heard in the press contradict, right? And the true number is 45,970.
I'm very focused on the 45,000. I think it's really important for us to develop specific policy solutions for those. I also think we need policy solutions for the 42,860 as well, because we need each and every one of these units to be occupied. So I'm, I am, I appreciate that you're trying to disaggregate the data, and as is our chair, and she's smarter than me, so you should listen to her. But, but I do want every single unit to be occupied. That's our goal.
No conversation is off the table. We are not suggesting that we can't talk about both groups, but I just want to be really clear about why we are being so clear about the difference between those groups. So if we can, so I can turn it over to Dr. Gomer to talk a little bit about what we see in the income levels of the data, as you asked.
Thank you. This will be brief, because I in fact don't have those data with me or available, but...
Is it available data?
What I will say is, it is, I can't guarantee that the Census Bureau will approve my request to release those data. We go through a very rigorous process of disclosure avoidance before any data can be shared, but I'm more than willing to work to get those data as quickly as we can and do that.
And, but frankly, this is what so clearly underscores the need for our legislation. And I think you indicated, we were confused, but apologies, Assistant Commissioner, I think you referenced yourself as being confused in your testimony in relation to our bill, Intro 352. The, what this bill would do would de-identify every vacant unit that's available in New York City in real, on an annual basis, so that we know exactly where it is. And these vacant units are not just helpful to us in addressing the housing crisis that we all recognize, but it's, if you talk to Mr. Espinal here about the vacant unit in his building, and how it is having such deleterious impacts on his living conditions, the leaks, the rats, the mold that comes from one vacant unit that is left in disrepair and affects an entire building, the Housing and Vacancy Survey, which is a great tool to Chair Sanchez and Dr. Gomer's points, doesn't help us address these issues. So I would like to address Deputy Commissioner Santiago with just a couple relevant questions, if the chair would allow, who, it's always good to see.
Thank you, Councilmember.
It's good to see you, Anne Marie. It's good to see you, Anne Marie. How many, how many violations have been issued to vacant units and this fiscal year, this this fiscal year-to-date or last fiscal year? Does, do HPD inspectors issue violations such that vacant units are not proper, including vacant units not being properly secured? Or do we track if the vacant units are having negative impacts on adjacent units? And does that inform our policies? Could you speak to this a little bit more?
Sure, again, Councilmember, our goal is to make sure that tenants are safe in the housing that they are in. And when we write the violations for the conditions in the location where they are, the expectation is that that violation will be corrected, whether that violation is caused by something internal to the unit, whether it's caused by another occupied unit, because we often see that, or whether it's caused by a vacant unit. There is no distinction that we make about that. The the condition is is issued and it is expected to be corrected.
So the issue is corrected based on the impact that it has on the neighbor, not on the vacant unit itself? That the that the underlying issues in that vacant unit need to be addressed? It's only specifically the impact that it may have on a neighbor because it's the complaint-driven system that's coming from Mr. Espinal or whoever it may be?
Generally speaking, that's correct, yes. And again, we, I talked about in in response to Councilmember Rivera's concern, right? If there is harassment is being caused by these types of conditions that are widespread in a building, we certainly have tools to address those issues.
To me, this underscores, again, the need for Councilmember Rivera and Councilmember Brewer's urgent legislation. We need to be more aggressively issuing violations to vacant units to make sure that they are getting renovated and inhabited as quickly as possible. And I appreciate the perspective of the impact it has on the neighbor, which is important, but we should be addressing more comprehensively and underlying units and issuing violations accordingly. And I just want to come back to say, the fact that we, you all brought a specific data point that is a compelling one, that only 2,500 of the vacant units that we're talking about today are for, going at rents under $1,000, but thousands of more units are renting at highly affordable rates, at $1,200 a month, at $1,300 a month. These are the units that our families in our communities are desperately in need of. And the fact that we have to beg the Census Bureau to try to get this information, to understand it, is just inadequate. It's totally inadequate, and that's why we need this survey conducted each and every year of every vacant landlord, of every vacant unit in each and every one of our districts, so that we can start putting pressure on those landlords, so that we can start making sure that every unit of housing that is available is built. When we're talking about numbers that are many larger, many factor the times, whether it's the 45,000 unit or the 42,000 number figure, many times as as many units as HPD is starting construction on in a given year, this is an important figure. This is an important source of housing. It's not a silver bullet, it's not a panacea, but it's a much more important part of the solution than I think you guys are giving it credit for today. And I I hope that you're hearing from this Council that we want you to take it more seriously.
We are, and I, and I think I want to just reiterate what Assistant Commissioner Joffe has said, which is, we take seriously every unit that's vacant in terms of making sure that we have the right tools to assist owners to put those units back on the market and to make sure that they're rehabbed for any New Yorker who's looking for it, again, regardless of of income or the cost of the unit. I don't think that was the point in in raising the the cost of the units.
No, there, thank you. There is no disagreement that any household that is in need of housing in the city, that is incredibly important. Any household that's experiencing harassment, that is incredibly important. Anyone who's living in a poor-quality unit, that is incredibly important. We share these goals together. What our goal is in sharing data so that we can understand the scope of individual problems is figuring out what is the right infrastructure for attacking a particular problem, and how do we want to use the city's resources to be able to best meet the varied needs that we have here in the city. That's our collective goal, and we look forward to working with all of you to address all of these challenges within our housing market.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Aviles. And I'm sorry, before before Councilmember Aviles, I'd just like to acknowledge that we were joined by Councilmember Barron, and now Councilmember Hudson has also joined us on Zoom. Councilmember Aviles?
Great, thank you so much, Chair. I guess I'd like to know, Deputy Commissioner, if if in a building a landlord has failed to pay his electricity and there is no light in any of the common areas, does that constitute a hazard for those residents in the building?
Yes.
So just to note, we have a persistently neglectful landlord, actually quite a series of landlords that has taken over buildings in our community, and not only offering no repair after many, many HPD inspections, tenants protesting, they currently find themselves in three buildings with no electricity.
Councilmember, please.
Seniors, residents, childrens, and I will get you those addresses.
Please do.
Absolutely. Yeah, we need swift action. We are tired of dealing with this person. In terms of how how do multifamily buildings that are sitting vacant get counted in this survey? Because I have quite a number of giant, persistently vacant buildings that are just sitting there.
Sure, it's an important question. Thank you for that. So as I said before, we include every type of housing in New York City, residential housing in New York City, that's part of a master list of every address. We draw a statistical sample, and when I say we, I mean the U.S. Census Bureau on our behalf draws a statistical sample of units from that list. So we do not select buildings for a survey. We spec, we specifically take a residential unit. In some cases, that might be a building, like a single-family home, but it is about a dwelling unit. There is complicated probabilist exempling design behind all of this that determines the certain ratios that we use of how many units of different kinds we pick in a given survey cycle, but we do that to ensure that we have, at the end of the day, a representative and substantially large enough sample to be able to speak to all of the different types of housing in all of the ways that we do. So to your specific point of if you have a given building where all of the units, right, are vacated and it is not occupied at all, it has exactly the same probability of being picked for our survey as a building right next door to it that's similar in every other characteristic but is entirely occupied. So we we don't know in advance what the status of those units is, which is part of why we send our trained field representatives to those sampled units to determine its occupancy status according to our protocols and procedures, and then to gather additional information that we report on to you and to the general public.
So so buildings that are, let's say, in a fire, that's empty for five, 10 years, they're potentially included in the survey. So to me, so I I appreciate that, I'm sure statistically that is pursued with rigor and all of that. To my community who is suffering a need for low-income housing and at the brink, watching buildings persist year after year after year and the city not materialize any real affordable housing for them is part of the problem. So what I'd love to understand is, what is the proactive mechanism that HPD is doing to not only get the, I know you want to focus on the on the 45,000 rent-stabilized units that are vacant and on the market, but what's the proactive push even around the 42 rent-stabilized units and also all these buildings that are sitting empty as our residents are sitting in homeless shelters?
Thank you for that question. Again, we want to make sure that when we're here talking about the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey, we're doing it because we want to make sure that we are using the data that we have in front of us to drive our discussions. The survey is not a substitute in any way for any of the actions that we're here talking about and the need to to build and preserve more low-cost and affordable housing. Certainly, to the extent, you know, when there are vacant properties that are available, there can be sort of any number of range of appropriate responses, but primarily, we also want to see as many homes and buildings become affordable housing as possible. We have a range of preservation programs and would love for owners to come work with us and turn that housing into low-cost and affordable housing. We, the law does not allow us to require an owner to do that, but we have invested significantly in our preservation infrastructure. We also really need certain tools at the state level that will make HPD more efficient, more effective in what we're doing. So we mentioned some of those in in testimony, things like J-51 might be the right option for certain building owners who have a building that is in that kind of state of repairs. We haven't had J-51 in some period of time, but it is an incredibly important tool in the city's toolbox that we're currently missing. We also have talked a little bit about HREA, and that is another piece of legislation that will help the city do more, and we really do need to do more, and we appreciate that there are tenants who are looking around and saying, we want to see more low-cost and affordable housing in our neighborhoods. We share that that concern, we want to work with the Council on it, and we need some state action to help make what we're currently doing more efficient and more effective.
I appreciate that, and I I guess I would, I will send you the information about that building or set of buildings in my district. And, you know, just underscore, I think, I think your intention in your testimony was not to say that this is not important, but it's what we heard, what I heard, is one-tenth of a percent is a distraction, and I'm deeply disturbed by that because one family, we on the Council are in the community. We hear the stories every single day of people who are getting pushed out of their homes, who are being harassed, who are persistently shuffled around by the incredible bureaucracies that we've created, that that favor the real estate industry, quite frankly, and not tenants who are struggling on a day-to-day basis. So I I would advise never to use a distraction, the terminology of distraction, when you're talking about housing in New York City, particularly because you know the depth of the crisis that we're facing. Every unit we can get on the market as quickly as possible to house a family is not a distraction. It is imperative that we do that. So I don't think it was your intention, but that's certainly, I think, what you're hearing from many of my colleagues, and it's certainly what's laying on me as I go back to my district and I sit with seniors who are crying because there is nowhere for them to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Aviles. And and I think the the way that you phrased it is is really quite perfect, right? What is HPD doing about units or buildings that are sitting vacant while tenants and residents sit in in our in our shelters? So if I can just drill down on that, you you said there is a number of options, Assistant Commissioner, a number of options that are available to the administration to address those those units, even as we, you know, have a separate conversation about Albany, you know I'm there on J-51 reform, you know I'm there, we held a hearing on ADUs legalizing basements, you know, we are hearing today a resolution in support of affordability plus or HREA, apparently it's called, question marks, and? But even even as we we push Albany to give us more authority, to to allow us to do more and to support us in doing more, can we talk about the the tools that the city has as at its disposal right now, right? So our Zombie Homes program, Article 11s, you know, there's, there's a number of tools. So can you talk to us about how HPD is using the tools that we have available today to move vacant units into occupied units?
Sorry, thank you for that question. So I I think you did a great job of teeing up the question, which is, which is, yes, there are circumstances in which our Zombie Homes law is helpful in ensuring that we are responding to homes that are in foreclosure that have been neglected. There are tools that we can use to productively turn housing into safe and low-cost, affordable housing, and all of these are incredibly important. So as you said, we have been pushing for ways to make these tools more effective and more efficient. These are pretty small parts of our day-to-day work. One of the features, defining features of our housing market is there are too few vacancies. So these are not the main workhorses of of our work, but certainly our preservation programs are, and we welcome the opportunity to work with more owners to turn housing that could be productive, low-cost, affordable rental housing into low-cost and affordable rental housing, and to working with the Council to identify more potential opportunities. We want to make sure that when we talk about each of these particular programs, these particular scopes of work, we're just very clear on what the capacity of any potential response is.
All right, thank you. So drilling drilling down a bit, at our executive budget hearing, Commissioner Carrion announced a pilot program called Unlocking Doors, not to be confused with Open Doors and unlocking locked doors, I don't know, there's, there's a lot of similarly named programs. But a pilot program called Unlocking Doors, which proposes to invest $10 million to repair rent-stabilized units that have been chronically vacant for tenants with vouchers. So to start, is Unlocking Doors a recognition by the administration of the importance of rent-stabilized units?
Thank you for that question. First and foremost, it's a recognition that there are New Yorkers with vouchers, and we want to get them housed as quickly as possible, and that the time that people spend looking for housing is really, isn't something that is really significant. We need to get people stably housed quickly. It's also an acknowledgement that we are willing to be creative and explore potential opportunities wherever we can find them. We are being opportunistic. We want to be clear on what the scope of that problem is, but also, where possible, explore new ideas.
Thank you. So given the potential that we've heard a lot from from our residents across the city, given the potential for nefarious actors who are either, you know, holding units hostage or otherwise acting out of bad faith, how does the the Unlocking Door program design itself, how do you contemplate targeting the most deserving landlords and units for this program?
Well, it's a pilot program. That is a good way for us to make sure that we have identified the right source of potential units for bringing back online. This takes very seriously all the things that folks here are saying. There are a small, this is a small number, we've been, wanted to be very clear on that so that expectations are correct. But that being said, the design of the program is meant to see, to the extent that there are low-cost, poor-quality units that have been off the market, can we bring any of those back online? Because every single person that we can house is a great opportunity. That being said, it's a pilot program, and we'll make sure that we have set up the the criteria correctly.
So there there will be a focus on low-cost apartments?
Yes, this is targeting low-cost units.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it back to Councilmember Brewer for a second round, and then I'll continue.
Thank you very much. I just want to add that, understand the data, it's probably my misunderstanding, because I do want to get it correct. So does this include the NYCHA units that are not in the, not rented?
Councilmember, we know you to love talking data with us, so thank you for that follow-up question.
Yes.
So all of NYCHA is included?
So NYCHA is not included in these count of rent-stabilized units because NYCHA is not subject to rent stabilization. It is certainly included in all of the selected initial findings we presented last year in all of our reports, but it's not rent-stabilized.
Then the next question is, all right, so the Chair mentioned the 45, but at one point you said 4,700, maybe because it's more up-to-date for 12 months or more. Is that correct? That's what you said from the Housing Vacancy?
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify.
Help me to understand, because I'm confused about these numbers.
Understood, and it doesn't help when they're all verbal and maybe not always written down, right? So we're talking about rent-stabilized units that were not occupied and not available is 42,860 units. These are all numbers from the Housing and Vacancy Survey.
Yep.
There is, within that universe, there are 4,000, I think, 4,740, I think.
That's what you said, 4,000, yeah, 4,740, okay.
That have been.
12 months or more.
Vacant for 12 months or more.
Okay, and then the median rent is which, is that of the 4,740?
That's for the 4,740, right.
Okay, and then the rent of the larger rent stabilization and unavailable, what's the median rent there?
Sure, so overall, that whole 42,000 number, the median rent is, legal rent, is 1645.
Whatever, okay. All right, so then the question is, in both cases, do you consider all of these un-unaffordable or do you consider them affordable? How does that get, I mean, I would look at the 1645 as affordable with a voucher.
Well, so whether a unit is affordable depends on the household that's going to be living.
No, I understand that.
So when we, so you'll often hear us talk about low cost because that's So when we, so you'll often hear us talk about low cost, because that's sort of a slightly less person-specific, but certainly to the extent that there are units that are available that are much closer to that $1,500 median, yeah, we would consider that to be a unit that is unique and an opportunity for a low or moderate income household, whether we're talking about vouchers or otherwise, because as we highlighted in our testimony, there's a really big gap between the median rent of 1,500 and the median available rent, that 2,750. That huge distinction is what makes it so hard on any given day if a low or moderate income New Yorker needs to move. They are going to be presented with units that are primarily available at 2,750.
Okay, but then we're also in this desperate situation, the only way that something can get renovated, if it needs renovation, is through the program that was mentioned earlier, or the owner does it his or herself, or there may be some way in Albany, which hasn't happened yet, I don't know that we can force anybody to renovate because we have the takings situation always with hovering in terms of the courts. So are there any other suggestions you have as to how to get these units rented?
Thank you for that question. I am not a constitutional scholar, so I'm not going to wade in on the takings debate, but, yes, we do believe that our most significant tools for bringing any of these units back online are things like our preservation programs with HPD, something like an as-of-right J-51 to the extent we're talking about big building systems, we're helping an owner navigate that challenge. Certainly, an owner can, as you noted, choose to do the renovations on their own. And we did, we do have the new Unlocking Doors pilot, to the extent that that's a gap in any of the tools that are available, we'll see if that becomes.
And then last question, so the Unlocking Doors is fairly new. I know J-51 a little bit too well, but have any of these programs, have you attempted to talk to owners that have vacant units to see if they will take advantage of any of these programs?
So.
Even the numbers that you have here, that's a lot of apartments.
So now that we have this data, it is important and will help drive a lot of our policymaking. Part of the public discourse has been confusion coming from owners as well, as to the extent of low-cost, low-quality units. So we think it's a really important table setting for people to understand what we're talking about here. Folks from across the agency, whether we're talking about in the context of our enforcement and neighborhood services, our development teams, who you know well, are frequently working with owners, and we look forward to working with owners to bring as many units back online into productive and hopefully affordable and low-cost rental use as possible.
Okay, I mean, I think that it has to be a much harder push, but I appreciate what you're saying, a much harder push. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer, and agree, agree on that front. Back to Unlocking Doors, but only using it as a stand-in, right? J-51, other programs are also subject to regulatory agreements. Will Unlocking Doors participants be subject to a regulatory agreement with HPD?
I don't want to misspeak on this, since this is an inter-agency effort, let me just get back to you, and we'll confirm.
Okay, thank you. But speaking on regulatory agreements as a tool to ensure compliance and keep rents, keep units rent-stabilized and et cetera, how many, how many buildings have regulatory agreements with HPD at this time?
Sorry, the question is, how many buildings have regulatory agreements?
How many properties?
Citywide?
Yep.
I don't have that number.
Okay, a follow-up. Okay, I'll follow up on this round of questions because they were related to that. Councilmember Ressler? Sorry, sorry, I lied, I lied to you. Councilmember Rivera is next, sorry.
Sorry, Lincoln, you're going to be great afterwards. Okay, so just, when you're counting the rent-stabilized units, clearly you have to work with other agencies in order to compile this data, I should say. So you work with HCR, right, Department of Homes and Community Renewal?
Yes, we have a longstanding, very positive partnership with them. We utilize data from their agency in part, but it's important to note that the way that we classify and count rent-stabilized units is not based on the same source of information as HCR. We combine multiple sources to make sure that we really have the most valid estimate of units that are subject to rent stabilization. So HCR's data is only one small part of how we do that on the NYCHVS.
Okay, no, I understand that, because I was a housing organizer and case manager before I became the councilwoman, and I would have to send people to 25 Beaver Street to get their rental history so they could prove that they were rent-stabilized. I mean, the things that tenants go through for like, for like a tiny slice of justice is out of, is out of control. All right, I just want to move on from there, because you said you don't count NYCHA in the rent-stabilized because it doesn't apply, absolutely, but do you work with NYCHA to also count the vacant units? Because it's estimated, according to Chair Aviles, that there could be as many as 6,000 vacant NYCHA units.
Thank you for that question. We do work with NYCHA, in addition to all of the various agencies, and NYCHA is an important part of our sample. We do report on vacant units in NYCHA, it was in our selected initial findings. I'm happy to follow up afterwards and direct you to those NYCHVS numbers.
Sure, I mean, I could find the numbers, I just want to ensure that, because sometimes all the numbers that exist out there in the ether just don't match.
And it's very important that all New Yorkers are represented. We've made significant investments, including in the 2021 redesign, which we talked about, including in translation, and it's now, the survey's now translated in seven languages. We take that translation process incredibly seriously. We often get questions, is this person, is this group of people involved, is this group of people involved? This is something that we've invested in very significantly, because it's really important that, particularly that groups that don't usually get their voices heard are heard through the survey.
And that's what the community-based organizations are for, that approach it with cultural humility and speak way more than seven languages, so I just want to acknowledge all the organizations that are here that do this work day in and day out. To Councilmember Brewer's point, she was mentioning, like, how do we get these inspections done, for example? And one of the alternatives to, I guess, to report on a vacant unit would be a warrant? There was something mentioned, using warrant language? Let me give you a specific example. So 365 South Fourth Street, there are three vacant units with known hazards that a vacant unit inspection is designed to capture. How do we get HPD to inspect that unit?
I'm not quite following you, Councilmember. You said there's no hazards in the unit?
Known.
No known hazards.
So I'll repeat it. 365 South Fourth Street, there are three vacant units with known hazards that a vacant unit inspection should be designed to capture. How would we get HPD to inspect that unit?
So again, I think as I, as I have tried to indicate, if those units are causing hazards for other occupants in the building, and we believe that those hazards are being caused by the owner in an effort to harass the tenants, certainly we can speak with the tenants at 365 South Fourth Street, I'm happy to follow up with them after this hearing, and find out more about the particulars of this situation.
Okay, that would be great. I only ask because you want to encourage tenants, you said, to report the violations within their own homes, so I just wanted to get clarity on how you do that for units that might be affecting your own that are vacant, however few they may be.
Thank you.
So thank you for the time, to the chair, thank you for your graciousness, and thank you to everyone that is here to testify. Thank you, thank you for internal questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna want to wrap this, unless I see new colleagues, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna be short in my last round of questions. Councilmember Ressler, so we can get to you.
Great, sorry, briefly. So I will not at all focus on vacant and unregulated housing in this set of questions, which I know is a topic that causes a great deal of anxiety for many people in this room and beyond. Total housing, Dr. Galmer, remind me the number from the most recent Housing and Vacancy Survey of the total vacant apartments, both that are on the market and that are not currently on the market?
So vacant from the 21 survey was 103,000, I believe. If you give me one second, I will confirm that.
Vacant that was?
This is vacant and available.
Vacant, available, and vacant and unavailable?
Vacant and unavailable, again, not rent-stabilized, this is across the board, was certainly a much, it's a pretty substantial number.
353,000?
353,400.
Okay, so 353,400 vacant, unavailable, 103,000 vacant, available, 450,000 apartments that are unoccupied in the city of New York at this time, at the time of the housing and vacancy.
Yes, out of 3.64 million.
At the time of the survey, out of 3.6 million, but one out of two, one out of eight. No, is that, I think, four, what was, tell me the number again?
353,400.
Okay, so 450,000 out of 3.6 million? I think my math was right on that, one out of eight. There we go, so 12.5% vacant apartment, unoccupied.
Unoccupied.
Unoccupied, excuse me. That's a huge freaking number, right? At a time when we have a housing crisis. So do we think that landlords, I'm now asking you for your perspective as an expert researcher and as the Assistant Commissioner for Policy, welcome your insight as well. Do we think that the real estate industry is, is driving scarcity in the market?
So I will just make one additional point here, right? And it's why, at least I'm very careful, and so are my colleagues, about the terminology we use here. We have to say unoccupied because in fact, a very large share of those units that are vacant and not available are used as seasonal or occasional homes, they're second homes, they're pied-ataires. They in fact may not be vacant, right? Somebody who uses that house once a week, once a week, a one weekend a year, in fact, may or may not be there, but those are counted as not occupied by full-time residents.
But you do break down, what percent of those units are pied-ataires?
Correct. Almost a third of the units in our 21 survey that were not available were held for seasonal or occasional use.
Nearly a third of the 350,000 number, so let's take 115,000 off, we're still talking about 350,000 or so total units of unoccupied housing in New York City that is not a pied-atare, somebody's pied-ater. That's a huge number.
The vast majority of those units, in our experience and the data that we've collected for many decades, is that they in fact do become available on the market very quickly.
Right.
They become occupied when we go back and re-interview them for the next survey.
Forgive me, I don't know these trend lines. Do you think things are getting worse?
I'm sorry.
Do you think that this issue is getting worse?
Which issue?
The issue of the large number of unoccupied units in.
I don't make that determination. I just measure things, that's.
But you measure things over time, and you look at the trends. I, I, I mean, we'll dig into it ourselves.
I certainly think that the number of units that have been held off the market for seasonal and occasional use has dramatically increased over time.
Not just seasonal and occasional use, the number of units that are off the mark, that are not occupied, is this issue getting worse in New York City?
It's getting more complicated. I don't know that it's gotten worse. Certain parts of it have gotten bigger, but those ebb and flow.
Councilmember, we do believe very strongly that one of the defining problems in our housing market, and plenty of us have been in this experience personally, of if we have to move on any given day, we have a housing market that moves incredibly quickly, so a unit that is available one day is occupied the next. We see that in the data, that there are too few units available at whatever the given price point is, that that is exponentially true. And something that is getting worse, Councilmember, is that the vacancy rate below units that are $1,500, that rent for less than $1,500 is less than 1%. That's the worst we've seen in years.
When I moved into my apartment, it was literally less than 24 hours after the tenant previously had left. So when we're talking about this very substantial, many hundreds of thousands of number of units that are unoccupied in New York City, it doesn't at all capture that reality that you and I and so many of us have had to experience when we moved, and we moved right into an apartment, apartment, the landlord does nothing to fix it up.
I will do one thing, just to clarify on the data, this is as of the reference period of our survey. We are not saying that there are hundreds of thousands of units sitting there right now.
How long have you been working on this survey, Dr. Galmer?
For quite a few years.
So when I ask you for your questions on trends and perspectives, it's to try and identify what are the issues that are getting worse, and what is policymakers?
And definitely that units held for occasional and seasonal use has gotten worse, and I would say, as Assistant Commissioner Joffe just pointed out, certainly the vacancy rate and the emergency in the lowest cost units has also gotten worse.
And I hope the mayor will push us and all, push with us in Albany next year on pied-ater tax and more aggressively look to generate revenue. I doubt that he will, though. That being said, the thing that I am fixated on is YieldStar and this algorithm that warrant.
Sorry, sorry, YieldStar?
I believe that's the correct name. This was the ProPublica article that was written, I don't know, in October, you may recall, about, that did a rather masterful job, I'm surprised it doesn't ring a bell, but it was done by Heather Vogel and others at ProPublica. I thought she did a masterful job of showing, we saw a decline in population during the pandemic, the renters didn't come back, the people didn't return in the numbers, and yet rents skyrocketed. And what she showed, I think quite insightfully, and I'm really interested in your all's perspective, is that landlords and real estate companies are using this algorithm to create false scarcity in the market, to rise, drive up the prices, and keep units offline. And so I'm very concerned about how we can more aggressively put pressure on these landlords to activate the 350,000 to 450,000 units, depending on your definition, that are unoccupied, and make sure that they are used as housing for all of us. Is this a major policy concern from HPD at this time? I'm having a hard time gauging whether you believe that there is, if this is a worsening issue more broadly, or it's just the pied-ater issue that's worsening. Could you offer some insight?
Thank you for refreshing my memory about that article.
I didn't mean to be a jerk, it was just a notable article.
Appreciate it and remember the article. You know, I think that we feel, so first of all, I want to thank you for underscoring the significance of trends or whatever it is, because it gives me another opportunity to say that we are currently in the field for the 2023 NYCHVS, and that is really significant because one of the defining features of the survey allows us to track over the course of a decade, because we go back to the same homes. We previously conducted this in spring of 2021, of course. I do want to be really clear that we do feel that there are too few units that are available on any given day, such that a New Yorker is going to have a lot of trouble finding a vacant and available unit. Any potential unit that we can bring back online, any potential unit that's being held off nefariously, not nefariously, that's a big deal. So we take all of those potential issues really seriously and are continuing to dig in and will continue to understand our, deepen our understanding of trends, patterns, anomalies with things like the 2023, the 26, the 29, because we're doing it four times this decade. But to the extent that we're talking about, I think we want to be really clear that, no, we don't think there are a huge number of vacant units that are not, that are sort of ready to be occupied, and that that's a defining feature. The ones that are, are moving very quickly, they don't tend to be off the market very long, so that's why we really feel strongly we need more low-cost and affordable units. That being said, we take any potential opportunity for more units really seriously.
I want to be really respectful to your time. I just want to ask one more time, because I still feel like I haven't got a clear answer on this. Separate and apart from our pied-aters, for the unoccupied, for the unoccupied vacant units that are not available, that 250, that 300, I think we said it was, 250,000 units that are in that category, if I got your numbers right, give or take, is that a growing number over time? Is that a diminishing number? Is that a trend we're concerned about or not concerned about?
I can speak to the numbers, but I can't speak to the severity of the problem, right? Derived from my statistics, except where it stands out to me in my expert opinion in that way. I think that as our overall housing stock has increased, so too has many of the numbers that go into these specific categories as an actual share of our housing market. Many of these categories actually have been remarkably consistent or have gone up and down over many, many decades with no particularly clear trend either direction.
Okay, I appreciate that, I trust your analysis, I, these are big numbers, and I don't think that we're maximizing our opportunities here as aggressively as we could and should be doing. I appreciate it's not a panacea, but there's a real opportunity here that would help our communities that are struggling like hell, and I wish that we could all take much more seriously.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ressler, and, you know, just to editorialize potentially incorrectly, but I think what at least I am hearing from my colleagues is, we want numbers that we can act on, on a, on a policy level. The HVS is wonderful, and it's, you know, the integrity of the data is extremely high, but we can extract information that we can act upon, right? Go after certain properties, try to use that information to bring units back online and strategize, right? So in sort of negotiating and continuing conversation on these particular bills, we want to get there. We want to get to how, to answer the question, how do we, as a council, as a city, collect information that we can act on with our policies? Last two questions from me regarding Local Law 29 and Local Law 30. So Local Law 29. So Local Law 29 requires a census of vacant and abandoned properties every five years. Can you describe HPD's role? What has, what was the last time it was collected? I believe it was 2020, but tell us when it was the last collected, what the administration does with this information, and if the information is available to the public.
This was Local Law 30?
29.
So, Local Law 29, I don't believe is administered by HPD, but we would be happy to follow up with more information on that.
Okay, so what about Local Law 30 of 2018, which requires the city to report annually on vacant city-owned properties? Is that administered by HPD and what do you do with this information? Do you make the findings available to the public?
Yes, and we provided the, yes, it is administered, or I guess, HPD is charged with executing on Local Law 30, and we did deliver that report to, in 2022, that was last year.
And can you just talk about the methodology for obtaining this, the information contained in this report?
Yes, I would say our, the infrastructure here goes beyond just the report. There are a number of properties that are city-owned, some of which are maintained by HPD. In recent years, that has been a dwindling number, as I'm sure that you're aware. Many, our focus has been on, whenever possible, turning those properties into affordable housing when we can. There are 80% of the ones within HPD's jurisdiction are part of an existing RFP or RFQ pipeline for planned future development of affordable housing. The balance are programmed for either non-residential use, or they face significant development challenges. Those challenges can include things like odd shapes, they're very small sizes, I'm told they could be as small as two feet wide, and so that can, you know, it can require assemblages with private owner. And so, those are things that we're constantly considering for their, for their potential.
Thank you, and just one clarifying question. In the, in HPD's reporting, in 2019, the number of vacant lots was 863, 831 in 2020, 780 in 2021, so a downward trend, but then we went up to 810 in 2022. Can you explain why we saw that slight increase?
Yes, thank you. There can be a little bit of noise in that number. I'm sure that the survey methodologist next to me or the statistician will tell me that that's not what noise is, but that number can increase, it generally is decreasing as we turn those lots into more productive use and especially affordable housing. There can be times where a few properties come into the portfolio, for example, in late 2021, we took ownership of some sites that had been damaged during Sandy, as we prepare for closings with developers for affordable housing on those sites. So, we can see a little bit of that, and I believe that's what happened.
Okay. Looking at my colleagues to, to make sure, no outstanding questions, but I want to, I want to thank you all for your testimony today. There were a lot of numbers, maybe we can like work on a wrap-up graphic of, of some of these key points, just to, to communicate precisely, you know, what is important about the vacancy rate in New York City and understanding those vacant and not available units. It's, it's, it's a thing, it's a thing, so we can, we can talk about it. But, you know, I just, just to highlight a couple of takeaways, the, the number of vacant and available units, that's what we're working with, is around 45,000. The number of low-cost rentals has the, the, the lowest vacancy rate historically that we have seen. And then apartments that rent for higher rent levels, those are the ones that we're, we're seeing at higher vacancy levels, perhaps because New Yorkers can't afford them, right? So, we'll, we'll try to expand access to all of those. So, thank you, thank you again for, for your testimony, for answering all our questions. I hope that someone from HPD can stay behind and listen to our advocate and resident testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now move to testimony from the public. Please listen for your name to be called, whether you are here in person or appearing via Zoom. If you are testifying on Zoom, when it's your turn to testify, you will be prompted to unmute. Please accept this prompt and begin your testimony. In the interest of time, your testimony will be limited to two minutes per person. So for our first in-panel person, when you're ready, please come up to the table. First panel is going to be Colin Kent Daggett, Rolando Guzman, Kabir Chabra, and Jackie Delval.
You can begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Rolando Guzman, and I'm the Deputy Director for Community Preservation at St. Nick's Alliance. I'm also here with one of my colleagues, Colin Kent Daggett, and he also is going to, to submit a testimony. St. Nick's Alliance provide housing counseling and tenant organizing to tenants in North Brooklyn, and we are here today in support of Intro 195A, introduced by Councilmember Rivera, and for Intro 352-A, introduced by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler. First of all, I want to thank the leadership of Councilmember Keryn Sanchez for organizing this hearing. I think this is something long overdue, and it's shedding a lot of light about this big issue that us, as a community organizers, we've been dealing with pre-pandemic. I do want to say, and I have some examples of buildings that I want to address, but I think it's something important that, to talk about warehousing is what we saw before the HTPS pass. Before, we used to see big companies, predatory equity companies, buying buildings in a high level, high amount of dollars, like completely over-leveraged buildings, and instead of turning those units back to the market, what they were doing is pushing tenants out. And that was the case of one of the most known predatory equity companies in property group, for example, that they will buy buildings in over-leveraged prices. And what, what we used to think is like, okay, you have this high mortgage, you want to have a, make sure that you are paying your, your mortgage, right? But we started noticing that a lot of their buildings were vacant, and by vacant saying that 75, 80% of the units were vacant. Before the HTPS passed, what we thought that their plan was is to wait for the last tenant to move, then gut the entire building, take it out of the rent regulation, and turn it back into market. Past the HTPS, we start seeing more buildings actually getting, with units warehouse. And somebody talked about Frankenstein units, so that's one thing, but the reality is, this bill, especially 195A, what it's going to do is provide safety and empower tenants whenever they have issues that are coming from other units, to report it and to actually empower HPD to go and inspect and issue violations. And just one thing that HPD said before, is somebody asked about issuing violations for vacant units. I've been with inspectors from HPD, showing them units that they were vacant with the wide-open doors, that you can see conditions in those apartments, and they are saying, I cannot do anything about that. So, and those are the units that are causing the damage to the apartments occupied. So this legislation is going to provide tenants and the city the power to access those units and issue violations so tenants can be safe. I will pass it to my colleague, so he can describe a few of those buildings as well.
My name's. My name's Colin Kent Daggett. I'm the Senior Community Organizer with St. Nick's Alliance, and just to elaborate on some of the practices we see in Williamsburg and Greenpoint in particular. In recent years, we've seen that practice become more and more prevalent, and for landlords, one vacant apartment in a portfolio of thousands might be a negligible issue, but for tenants stuck living next to these abandoned units, the stakes are a lot larger. An example I'd like to bring up is 296 and 298 North Eighth Streets in Williamsburg. All the tenants who are in the tenant association are at work today, but in 2017, the remaining 15 or so tenants of 30 total units have resisted displacement for many years and remain in their affordable rent-stabilized homes. The other 15 that were successfully emptied have been padlocked shut since, untouched, now have collapsing ceilings, rat infestations, leaks, and mold that they're unable to get addressed through property management or through city inspection. Similar problems happen at 308 Covert Street, where the apartments that were years under quote-unquote renovation were eventually discovered to be filled with garbage when the ceiling collapsed into an occupied apartment and the garbage filled their bathroom. These stories happen all too often in Greenpoint, Bushwick, Williamsburg, and other neighborhoods across the city, and tenant complaints to property management and landlords are often met with a shrug, and visiting inspectors have to hope that a clumsy owner leaves a door open. And this bill, Intro 195A, represents a solution for these tenants. We need the city of New York to recognize that not giving residents recourse to address these serious problems that begin in warehouse units just gives predatory landlords carte blanche to abuse the tenants who remain in the partially empty properties. And this bill will allow tenants and advocates to intervene before a condition in one neglected apartment causes even more affordable housing to be lost. In the current crisis we face, every unit counts. For too long, warehousing has allowed landlords to hold apartments hostage, game loopholes in the rent regulation system, and make buildings increasingly unlivable, all at the expense of the remaining tenants. The neighbors who have to contend with partially occupied buildings and vacant apartments, hiding mold, vermin, leaks, garbage, and structural problems deserve a solution, and that's why we need Intro 195A. So I thank the council members and the committee here today for hearing our testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. It's great to see you all, councilmembers, and thank you so much for having this hearing. My name is Jackie DeVallier from Take Group Justice. My colleague Paul Siegel is going to be speaking a little bit later about the commercial vacancies, and I coordinate the Stabilizing NYC Coalition, which has got 20, 20 groups throughout the city, and many of our members are part of the Stand for Tenant Safety, the Apartment Warehousing Coalition, who've been working closely with all of you to pass Intro 195A. And I'm here to speak in support of that. Stabilizing NYC is a funded coalition to organize tenants against predatory equity, harassment, displacement. We hold speculative landlords accountable for unsafe building conditions and neglect. Our coalition meets monthly to discuss the trends we are seeing, and soon after the passage of the rent laws in 2019, I think Rolana did a good job of describing what had been happening up until then, and then we were in these meetings and everyone is noticing more and more vacant apartments kind of popping up with the intention to try to take them out of rent stabilization, to combine them with other vacant unions. And this resulting chaos from the construction, from doing these combinations, further drives out rent-stabilized tenants from the building. And then later, as we entered the pandemic, groups were finding that the vacant apartments were so poorly maintained, they created unsafe and uninhabitable conditions for the surrounding units. The problems created by warehouse apartments are well-known to this committee, it endangers the tenants, it facilitates the invasion of state rent laws, and it reduces the number of affordable homes need, who need them. There are close to 90,000 homeless people, and I know that the number of vacant apartments is kind of in question after this hearing, but any number really is completely unacceptable. And I just want to say in conclusion that landlords can afford to make these habitable. Being a landlord is a very profitable business. On average, they make $500 per unit, and I think that we're, since we've seen so many of these be part of well-financed, bought by private equity, financialized housing, who've just been making a profit at all costs and not doing repairs and are driving up market rates, and I think this is a really critical issue to get at that and stop that practice. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Our next panel will be hybrid, so please come up to the table. James Lloyd, Ryan Manell, and Adam Roberts.
Afternoon, councilmember, Chair, and the rest of the committee. My name is James Lloyd, Director of Policy for the New York State Association for Affordable Housing. Our 400 members develop and operate the vast majority of affordable housing across the city and state. So first, I'd like to mention that we strongly support REZO 563, for the legislation formerly known as Affordability Plus. You know, it's outrageous that the city can only do 30-year financing for affordable housing and can't do non-residential uses on-site. You know, we need things like resiliens, daycare centers, open space amenities. Also empower HPD to finance mission-driven organizations to acquire and preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. So we very much stand with you, Chair Sanchez, in calling for the state to take that action specifically for that, that reform. On Intro 195, we strongly oppose this legislation, and it's, a lot of this is that whenever council mandates that HPD undertake a certain task with its inspection resources, you're inadvertently deprioritizing other inspection tasks. So, for instance, either with heat or with vacant apartments, you're then deprioritizing things like HQS inspections. So right now, it takes close to five months on average to house a homeless person in a homeless set-aside unit. So you have the homeless person in a shelter, you have a vacant homeless set-aside unit owned and operated by one of our members, and you have to have HPD and HRA and DHS all cooperate to get that person in there, and you have to do an HQS inspection before you house that homeless person. Right now, the vacancy rate in the Office of Housing Preservation inside HPD is 20%, and so, we're looking at, you know, potentially thousands of inspections a year to comply with this law, which would then would further delay it. So we're talking about, you know, homeless people, getting them into units as fast as possible when they're already identified. And, you know, for, in terms of the vacancy rates, obviously, we don't like vacant apartments. Our members' apartments are, have extremely low vacancy rates. According to HCR, the averages are sort of in line with historic trends, so we just don't feel this is a great use of resources at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And just a clarification, so on 195, there were several amendments, and they're geared toward making it so that the inspection of vacant apartments are sort of, they're, you, you have, the agency would have to do them when a tenant complains that there is an issue stemming from a vacant apartment. Would that be acceptable to NYSEFA, or what would NYSEFA's position be on a narrowed scope?
So I think when I, when we crafted this testimony, we had not yet seen that amendment, so I can't speak to it completely at this time. I mean, I think for us generally, we oppose mandates to mandate a certain number of inspections a year, right? Similar to our testimony on the heat bill, the 15% was the, the thing that really stuck out to us, this minimum number of inspections, because then, you know, whenever HPD undertakes an inspection, say for a vacant unit, then it can't respond to another complaint, for instance, made by an organizer, an advocate about a different building that's facing another problem. So you're sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. But, you know, we strongly support more resources for HPD across the board, and of course, you know, policies in place to, to get this, their vacancy rate up, excuse me, the vacancy rate in HPD down to get the number of employees up.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And on Zoom, Adam Roberts.
Starting time.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I can't seem to turn on my video, but thank you for holding this hearing today. I'm Adam Roberts, Policy Director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's housing providers, including apartment building workers and owners, and we are here to express our thanks to the council for recognizing the vacant rent-stabilized apartment, crisis facing our city. These vacant apartments were occupied for decades by tenants, long before modern laws around lead, asbestos, and sustainability were in place. Once tenants leave their apartments, lead and asbestos abatement, mold remediation, electrical rewiring, subfloor replacement, and kitchen and bathroom renovations must be completed. This work cannot be safely performed in an occupied apartment, but is legally required before a new tenant occupies an empty apartment. before a new tenant occupies an empty apartment. In currently, there is no legal mechanism to recoup the cost of renovating vacant rent stabilized apartments. Therefore, banks will not loan to owners to perform this work, as they are not confident owners will be able to pay back those loans. And the cost of this work is very high, often well over $100,000 per apartment. Without loans, owners do not have the financial means to pay for this work. As a result, these apartments have been left vacant en masse. And due to a lack of publicly available data, it is challenging to determine how many vacant rent stabilized apartments are vacant for this reason. Using that data we do have available, we believe that approximately 30,000 rent stabilized apartments are facing long-term vacancies, with up to 5,000 more becoming vacant each year. An additional 100,000 or more apartments face the risk of becoming vacant over the coming years. And while these bills may help increase the quality of data on the vacancy crisis, it is urgent that the council focus on immediately addressing the cause of this proliferation of vacancies. We do not have the luxury of waiting for more data, we must act. Our city faces unprecedented demand, rising homelessness, and rapid migration to places with lower costs of living. Fortunately, a bill was recently introduced-
Time expired.
You can finish.
Oh, thank you. Fortunately, a bill was recently introduced in the state legislature from Assembly Member Kenny Burgess and Senator Leroy Comrie, which would alleviate this crisis by allowing the cost of renovations to be recouped. We hope the council will support this and other bills to preserve our city's rent stabilized housing. Our city and state governments can both find a solution for this urgent crisis and improve the quality of its data at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And can you, Adam, can you describe how you reached the estimate of 30,000 long-term vacant?
Sure. We looked at the housing vacancy survey and saw which units were vacant that had tenants who had been in them for a decade or decades, so before current lead laws had been in place, which is often the most expensive work. And we saw that there were under 30,000 then, but based on it being 2023 now, we think it's around 30,000.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're saying that you looked at units that were not vacant?
No, that were vacant, but had just had a tenant who had been in place for many decades prior to current laws around lead abatements.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much. We'll look into that. Thank you.
And also, these units often had rents which were well below what a bank would consider sustainable to make a loan.
Thank you. And one more question. Can you also explain or break down your $100,000 estimate for rehabilitation?
Sure. So that is, you know, I just want to say that's a very, very conservative estimate. If you speak to architects, engineers, tradespeople, they will say this number, based on what NYCHA is doing with similar units, is often in the $200,000 range. But, you know, we, not every unit may not, may require that amount of work, but it's based on quotes we've received from general contractors. And, you know, lead abatement, asbestos abatement, mold remediation, those alone are many, many, many tens of thousands of dollars each, not to mention the fact that you'll often, on a vacant apartment, want to replace the floor, because, you know, someone's had a pet or pets over the years, you know, they've soiled the carpet and it's gone into the floor, and therefore, the entire floor needs to be replaced. Kitchen bathrooms often need to be replaced, and these are each many tens of thousands of dollars to do, even very economically in New York City.
Got it. So that includes both things that are acquired, like lead remediation and other additional changes, like upgrading a kitchen, right?
Yes, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next panel will be Oksana Miranova, Kareem Walker, Blaze Lapierre, and Anna Baker-Haines.
You can begin when ready.
Kareem, do you want to go first?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kareem Walker, and I work for the Safety Net Project at the Urban Justice Center. Let me just say, let me just start by saying that housing is a human right, and this is a mantra that many like me have shouted for decades. We know that stable housing, not just shelter, is the only way out of homelessness, and just in New York City alone, we have enough housing to end homelessness. Research reports from City Limits newspaper show that we have approximately 6,600 vacancies in the NYCHA system with an overall vacancy of approximately 4%. Another 2,600 supportive housing units specifically for homeless New Yorkers, and at least 39,000 empty rent stabilized apartments, with data suggesting that there are potentially as many as 88,830 of such units. And tens of thousands of market rate of apartments sitting vacant and collecting dust, thanks to landlords sitting on them. Yet we have a mayor who's heavy-handed and hard-hearted tactics when it comes to addressing street and shelter homelessness, including warehousing people in congregate shelters, and using sweeps that can be actively violent fool's errands, where no one accepts offers for services because housing is not offered to homeless folks. Meanwhile, as migrants are making their way to the city, Mayor Adams has said that we have no place to put them, so he's resorting to jails and prisons, to the consternation and horror of people across the political spectrum. This is just not true. As the New York Times reported last week, we have about 20,000 vacant hotel rooms that we can use right now. In addition, given that we have tens of thousands of vacant apartments and hotel, excuse me, and hotel rooms, why is he proposing policies that would severely undermine right to shelter? A critical protection that has prevented hundreds of thousands of people from severe harm and death, and that is an imperfect but indispensable part of ending homelessness in New York City. The city has the ability to house tons of thousands of people in empty supportive housing, NYCHA, and HPD apartments now. They must do so. The city could also be taking emergency action to get people into the tens of thousands of rent stabilized apartments that are still empty. While the administration has tried to assert emergency powers and the right to shelter, they've said nothing about using their emergency powers to house people. This is indefensible. In addition to its, in addition to its failure to use vacant units, the administration has also engaged in an all-out campaign to undermine the city, the council's critical city housing voucher package, to help homeless New Yorkers to get out of the shelter more quickly and prevent those facing eviction from entering the shelter system. We thank the council for the leadership on this issue and urge the mayor to quickly sign these bills into law. Housing is not seen as something that's optional. It's a vital part of people's ability to live, to survive, and to ensuring that people can be productive members of society. We know that shelters and safe havens don't provide the flexibility and freedom people need to contribute to society, which is why most, which is why we must act to house people now. We owed to 100,000 homeless New Yorkers in the city to help them get out of shelters and off the streets and into permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going down the line.
Yeah.
Hello? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Anna Baker-Haines. I'm a tenant organizer with Met Council on Housing, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the tenants of 705, 709 West 170th Street who had to be at work today. These buildings are owned by New York City's worst landlord, Daniel O'Hebbs Shalom. There are 40 units between the two buildings, and half of those apartments are warehoused. Half of the apartments are warehoused. Even so, there are over 700 open violations between these two buildings. Tenants are living in hazardous conditions with falling bricks, regularly failing heat and hot water, exposure to rats, pests, and mold. The vacant units in these buildings are worse. Having been warehoused over 10 years, they are full of bird and rat feces and mold, pipes are falling out of the walls, and holes connect one unit to the next. Two months ago, a flood from a vacant apartment caused a ceiling to collapse in the bathroom of an elderly disabled tenant, just moments after she had left the room. This was after two weeks of calling the management and 311 daily, begging for repairs. Tenant Oswaldo says, "I'm tired of not knowing what else will break down. Last Christmas, one of our neighbors got flooded because a vacant apartment's steam pipe broke, and the fire department had to break into the vacant apartment to identify the issue and figure out what water line to shut down." I will add that both of these leaks ran through light fixtures, putting tenants not only at risk of ceiling collapse, but electrocution and building-wide fires. The long, unaddressed water damage, along with the animal feces, is making tenants sick. Tenant Lloyd asks, "HPD, how many accidents, leaks, fires, falling ceilings need to happen before you take responsibility for inspecting abandoned apartments? Inspection must be mandatory for our lives, safety, and well-being." I have one more quote from a tenant. Can I finish? Thank you. Tenant Siki adds, "Landlords who bought the building should do their jobs and maintain their properties, but this is obviously not happening. HPD's name is literally Housing Preservation," which would imply, to me at least, that they should preserve the properties when landlords don't. And Tenant Gilbert, I will close with Tenant Gilbert, says, "I believe it is important to pass Intro 195 because it puts checks on slum lords that play the system at the expense of tenants. We need it now." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the stories.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Blaze Lapierre. I'm a tenant organizer with the Goddard Riverside Law Project, and I'm also here today on behalf of the Stanford Tenant Safety and Warehousing Coalition. In my work as a tenant organizer, I've witnessed firsthand the consequences that vacant and warehouse departments have had on the safety and well-being of tenants in our city. I believe that the vacant unit safety bill presents a vital opportunity to address this critical issue and protect the rights and lives of tenants. Throughout my work as an organizer, I've encountered numerous clients who have suffered health issues directly resulting from the vacant apartments in their building. During winter months, when a building is partially or entirely vacant, the lack of heating in these empty units often leads to inadequate heat distribution, leaving the remaining tenants to endure frigid temperatures that threaten their health and well-being. I've witnessed clients struggling with extreme cold, which exacerbates respiratory conditions and negatively impacts their overall quality of life. I'm here today on behalf of those tenants. Additionally, the presence of vacant units attracts pests and vermin, which pose significant health hazards to tenants. I've had tenants who have experienced getting bitten at night by rats in their sleep. I've assisted clients in addressing the infestation of rats, mice, and insects that have infiltrated their apartments from adjacent vacant units. These infestations not only cause distress and anxiety, but also contribute to the spread of diseases, allergies, and further compromise the health and safety of those tenants. The vacant unit safety bill comprehensively addresses these issues, introducing stricter regulations and enforcement mechanisms for property owners to maintain their vacant units. By mandating regular inspections and imposing penalties for noncompliance, the bill can help ensure that vacant units are properly secured, maintained, and do not pose health and safety risks to neighboring tenants. This proactive approach will help tenants, protect tenants from the adverse effects of vacant apartments, and furthermore, I'll just finish pretty quickly. This bill aligns with our city's commitment to provide safe and healthy housing for all residents. That's it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Oksana Miranova, and I'm here on behalf of the Community Service Society of New York. Today, we would like to offer our support for Intros 195 and 352, as well as Resolution 563. We're also here to underscore that rent regulation does not cause vacancy or housing neglect. Actions by scrupulous landlords and speculative investors do. In 2019, the New York State Legislature passed the HSTPA, the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act, and in order to undermine this law, which has been hugely impactful on the 1 million or so rent-regulated apartments that are in New York City, landlord lobbyists have resurrected the mythical connection between rent regulation and housing abandonment and neglect, grounding their arguments in fuzzy math and false readings of New York City history. In fact, time and time again, research has shown that rent regulation does not lead to property neglect. For example, a 2015 study using a sample of 161 communities in New Jersey tried to look at the impact of rent regulation, housing quality, and foreclosure rates. It did not find any significant impact on the two variables when controlling for apartment size, income, race of tenant, and median rents. Last summer, we at CSS polled New Yorkers about a wide range of issues as part of our annual Unheard Third Survey, and we found that rent-regulated tenants who experienced the rent increase were 12 percentage points more likely to see improvements in their buildings compared to unregulated tenants. Counter to anti-regulatory arguments, rent regulation does not inhibit building maintenance. Instead, it seems to incentivize it. We know from tenant testimonies that we just heard on this panel that some high-cost neighborhoods with large concentrations of rent stabilized units, like the Lower East Side and the Upper West Side, are, have landlords that are holding units off the market on purpose. Landlords claiming that renovations of units held off the market would cost an average $100,000 are overstating the average costs of renovation at turnover. Is it okay if I add a couple more things? Thank you. A two-minute conversation with a contractor or basic Googling will show you that is an astronomically false figure. Responsible operators of rent stabilized housing tend to average $15,000 in renovations at turnover, which actually matches the way that the post-HSTPA individual apartment improvement guidelines are written. In rare cases where there needs to be substantial rehab, like replacing floors, replacing cabinets, renovation costs could double, so they would be about $30,000. The only way that a 100,000 renovation pencils out is if the goal is to turn a formerly affordable unit into a luxury one. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I also want to thank HPD for staying in the back, Deputy Commissioner. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Our next panel will be Sue Sussman, Elizabeth Haack, Patricia Olafman, and Paula Siegel.
You may begin when ready.
Okay, I'm Sue Sussman. I did not give written testimony. My, I'm president of the Tenant Association Central Park Gardens on West 97th Street in Manhattan. I just wanted to respond to a few things that had been said earlier. One was, in response to the housing vacancy survey and the census, Stellar Management, which owns my building, refused to let the census workers into our building. Period. It wasn't until we threatened a lawsuit against them that they permitted the census workers in. They do not permit outsiders to come in and simply wander around asking questions. So whether, if a stellar building were included, one of the 78 or so stellar buildings were included in the housing vacancy survey, they would get zero information, or very little. The second thing is that in our building, which is primarily rent stabilized, although switching over to market rate, there are 245 apartments now that a couple have been combined. Most of the tenants are older than me. I'm 76, and a lot of them, I was a kid when I moved in. And a lot of them are dying or moving to nursing homes. And so we have, as of last week, sorry, two weeks ago, we had 13 warehoused rent stabilized apartments whose rent was roughly $800 a month. As of this week, we have 15 such apartments. So I'm betting that Stellar is not turning that information over. Number one. And number two, I feel terrible about all, these are apartments that are affordable, even without vouchers, they'd probably be affordable at $800 a month. Right? So there are families that need these apartments. Number three is that these apartments have been generally well-kept. To the extent that there are vinyl asbestos tiles, they have not been torn up. Even when Stellar Management was renovating apartments before the 2015, for market rate apartments and making them luxury, they weren't tearing up the vinyl asbestos tiles, they were simply covering them. Similarly, with lead abatement, they were covering things up rather than tearing it out. So the costs, the costs are a little bit unrealistic. And finally, CHIP's own estimate of roughly, I don't know, 30,000 apartments that it can't afford to deal with, those are, those are really significant. And I'm hoping that it shouldn't be a big lift, actually, for HPD to simply have a little bit more access to the vacant apartments, so that when their inspectors come, as they did to, I think it was 365 South Fourth, I don't remember the exact address, that Councilmember Rivera said. Councilmember Rivera said, that when the inspectors come and the tenants say, “We think this is coming from the vacant apartments,” and those vacant apartment doors aren’t open, HPD has another tool to look at those vacant apartments and to actually see what’s going on. Therefore, I support Intro 195. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia O’Laughman. I am a tenant at 788 Columbus Avenue on the Upper West Side. I’ve lived in my apartment for 50 years. I am also president of the Park West Village Tenant Association. Similar to my colleague here, I’m one of the baby tenants. I moved in when I was, you know, a youngster and raised my son there. Most of the apartments are now being vacated, just through transition death and transition to nursing homes. I would like to thank Councilmember Sanchez Rivera and members of the City Council Committee on Housing and Buildings for affording the tenant community an opportunity to provide testimony in support of Intro 195. Park West Village is composed of seven buildings. However, most of the rent-stabilized apartments are concentrated in three buildings located at 784, 788, and 792 Columbus Avenue. Park West Village was built in the 1950s to provide affordable, regulated housing for middle-class working people. It was multiracial, multi-ethnic, composed of teachers, nurses, lawyers, midwives, middle-class people, and spanned generations. It was a community, a microcosm of society, that allowed parents to comfortably raise their children without the rent burden experienced by over 50% of working and middle-class people today. We first noticed warehousing of apartments back in 2017. It accelerated following HSTPA in 2019, ostensibly due to the loop in the HSTPA that owners have maximized. A group of approximately 10 market-rate tenants had successfully challenged the illegal deregulation of their apartments. The result was that their apartments were returned to rent stabilization. However, in a review of one of the tenants’ rent history, it was documented that the last legally-registered stabilized rent was $1,281, yet the apartment after renovation rented for $5,888. A determination was made that that same rent was not supported and justified based on a review of the evidence. The tenant had offered, was offered, there was also evidence that similar data had been used to justify the rent in other cases. That tenant was offered a substantial buyout, which the tenant accepted. After the tenant’s departure, the apartment has remained warehoused since 2018. It is currently in the process of being Frankenstein with two empty adjoining apartments. Subsequent to the success of the market-rate tenants group, who successfully challenged their market-rate apartments, the Tenant Association noted, speculated that warehousing began as a means for the owner to circumvent the four-year look-back period. The Tenant Association noted that more and more vacant apartments were not being rented. Today, approximately 374, or 45% of the original 864 apartments still have affordable rents. Intro 195 provides for a multitude of health and safety precautions, which I’m not going to repeat. However, I would like to introduce, for your consideration, other consequences that have not, that need to be considered, that would further strengthen support and justify the need for Intro 195. The first is the constant Frankenstein-ing of warehoused apartments in housing that was built during the era when lead and asbestos were building standards. The remaining tenants are being chronically exposed to environmental toxins present in these apartments through failure of contractors to adhere to basic construction standards to protect the tenants that remain. The second is exposure to short-term rentals during a time when working and middle-class people are rent-burdened, spending more than 40% of their income on rent. Specifically, and I’m not, I’m going to, you know, go through this, but I introduced pictures just to illustrate. We have, in one building, we have three contiguous apartments that were previously rent-regulated that are now being Frankenstein. Three contiguous apartments. In one apartment, 6D, we don’t necessarily know how long that apartment has been vacant, but 6E, which was one of those deregulated apartments, has been vacant since 2018, and 6F has been vacant since 2016. So those are three apartments that could have been readily made available to working-class people at affordable rates. They don’t need luxury housing, they didn’t need significant renovations, those apartments could have been put back on the market. We have apartments that were vacated through death as far back as 2016. We have significant apartments that could be rented today were those apartments made available. A similar pattern in one of the other buildings, we had two rent-stabilized apartments who were combined. The rents approximately were about $1,500 each. However, the first rent on the first new, the first rent on the newly-Frankenstein apartment was $13,500. So, you know, you can read the remainder of the testimony, but I think the point here is, is that there are multiple ways to take apartments that could be rented and make them unavailable for renting at a time when the housing crisis, the consensus is that a housing crisis exists. So in conclusion, there is widespread consensus and unanimity regarding the lack of affordable housing throughout New York City. There are three solutions to this crisis. First, and the most important, is to preserve the regulated housing that exists. Second is to minimize the approval of luxury housing permits, and third is to build affordable housing. Most new housing being built today is out of the reach of everyday working and middle-class people. To do anything else would be socially and morally incongruous with those welcoming words emblazoned on the Statue of Liberty that says, “Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free.” Well, exactly where are these tired, poor, huddled masses supposed to live? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hock, and I live at 325 East 12th Street for almost 50 years, which is currently owned by Madison Realty Capital. I firmly believe that tenants throughout the five boroughs have needed Intro 195A for many years. I wish we’d had it when, in 2015, when Rayfield Toladano bought buildings in the East Village, including mine. The majority of apartments in these buildings were rent-regulated. With the help of GOLs, Cooper Square Committee, and Urban Justice Center, tenants formed the Toladano Tenants Coalition. Five years later, Attorney General Tish James said, “With the financial backing of Madison Realty Capital, Toladano harassed tenants through coercive buyouts, executed illegal construction practices, and failed to provide tenants with utilities, repairs, and other necessary services.” End quote. TTC believes that Toladano displaced about half the tenants in 15 buildings with a total of 279 apartments. Toladano gutted some apartments as soon as they were vacated; others were left to deteriorate. At 325 East 12th Street, my building, Toladano workers stripped seven apartments of fire insulation down to the studs. Black dust sifted through floorboards on occupied apartments. All 15 buildings in this coalition are at least 100 or more years old, so it’s assumed dust and debris are full of lead paint. Toladano’s workers used one gutted apartment as a dumpster for debris and another for spoiled food. May I? Okay.
Yes.
Another one is...
And I apologize, I just have to step out for one minute to pump. I’ll be right back. I’m listening, and my colleagues will be here.
Okay. Thank you. So Toladano workers used one gutted apartment as a dumpster for debris and another for spoiled food from recently-vacated apartments. When tenants opened their windows, the smell of rotted food permeated the air shafts. Cockroaches, water bugs, and mice moved in throughout the buildings, but Toladano did not provide exterminator services. I could hear mice mating behind my kitchen sink. Vermin followed me as I entered my apartment. Nothing we tenants did could stop the onslaught of vermin throughout the building. Calls to 311 were of no avail because DOB could not get access to the source of the problem. All the gutted apartments were fire hazards because mice can chew through electrical wiring, causing shorts. Tenants in the other 14 buildings suffered through the same problems. Alarmed by tenants, TTC tenants reports, elected officials finally got DOB to make a surprise inspection of the buildings. Toladano’s crews fled, leaving a few units unlocked. I remember one DOB inspector calling his boss for permission to open the door of a dumpster apartment. When he did, he took one look and exclaimed, “There’s liability issues in here,” and shut the door. DOB found a large number of violations in occupied apartments and common areas of the 15 buildings that day, but DOB could not access the locked vacant apartments. Tenants lived with hazardous conditions for two years until Toladano went into bankruptcy. Madison Realty Capital had to cure all violations and was ultimately given total ownership of the buildings in 2020 as part of a settlement, Assurance #20-067. As TTC, which is now tenants-taking control, worked with End Apartment Warehousing, Stand For Tenant Safety coalitions, we learned of many buildings throughout the five boroughs where tenants are living under hazardous conditions even longer than we did. Intro 195A will allow tenants to report dangerous situations in nearby apartments and make landlords give DOB access to inspect. We hope that this will result in faster cures of unsafe conditions in partially-occupied buildings. Please pass Intro 195A pronto. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to my colleagues, and I think Councilmember Brewer caught me tearing up a moment ago. So that was very moving. Thank you. My name is Paula Siegel. I’m here on behalf of Take Root Justice and two coalitions that were part of the Abolish the Tax Lean Sale Coalition and United for Small Business, New York City. So, switching gears a little bit from residential dwellings that are vacant to abandoned buildings, vacant lots, and commercial vacancies, I’m going to split my testimony in two and talk about the lean sale and how it facilitates warehousing and vacancy, and give you all an update about Department of Finance’s final, finally complying with a law you all passed in 2017 and releasing data from the servicers just yesterday. So I’ll come back to that, but good news to share today and share a little feedback on the commercial vacancy portion of Intro 352. So as we all know, in 1996, then Mayor Rudy Giuliani created the Lean Sale Program. For the next quarter century, the Department of Finance sold overdue property tax and water debt to a privately-administered hedge fund-backed lean trust at a discounted rate of approximately $0.72 on the dollar. The trust tax on high interest rates, fees, rapidly ballooning the debt, and can foreclose on properties of owners unable to pay. This effectively privatized a core government function and left both our neighborhoods and property owners in distress. As a direct consequence, vacant lots and unoccupied buildings have been languishing in private speculative hands, some for decades. The program continued until February last year, when the council’s authorizing legislation thankfully sunset. But in the last lean sale, the one held in December 2021, the city sold debt on 373 vacant lots, and the two sales before that contained a comparable number of properties. These vacant lots, most of them are heading to something called a graveyard trust by the Department of Finance. That’s a trust that has no investors, that accepts liens on properties that would pose a risk to the bond offering of the trust created each year. That trust, unlike the trust created each sale year, this one doesn’t expire. It continues to this day and currently holds liens on nearly 6,000 properties. We literally got this data yesterday. We’ve been asking for months, and years, actually, some of us, for Department of Finance to comply with the quarterly reporting law that the council passed in 2017. The data is finally up on DOF’s website as of yesterday afternoon, so we’re finally able to see a little bit into what’s going on in this graveyard trust, and it’s not pretty. Not only is it still holding liens on over 6,000 liens, but it hasn’t initiated foreclosure at all on over 600 of those properties, half of which are vacant lots. A considerable number are unoccupied buildings, which could be affordable housing, as could much of the vacant lots. These are all privately-owned. They’re not lots that HPD has an excuse for, as they sat here and said, “Oh, they’re too small. Okay, then do something about the ones that are being warehoused by private deed holders in our neighborhoods.” We are going to do a little bit of more analysis on the data that came out yesterday. I’m not able to bring that to you today, but in the future, this council should not authorize a return to the expired lean sale practice and should really consider looking back at the graveyard trust and forcing the city to take back all of that debt for enforcement. That graveyard trust is not doing our neighbors or the neighbors of properties any good, and those properties are concentrated in low-income neighborhoods in the outer boroughs, the ones that pose the most risk to a bond offering. I also want to thank the council for Intro 352A, for which will improve reporting requirements for commercial spaces that’s badly needed. The storefront registry, which was created a couple of years ago, only requires landlords to report on ground floor and second floor commercial spaces. It’s a bit arbitrary. This bill would get rid of that arbitrary delineation. But it’s also very important that we keep that second floor or ground floor marker somewhere in the data, and our colleagues at ANHD have submitted detailed testimony about this. If that is lost, we will not be able to get longitudinal data and look back at the last few years, which is just as important as looking forward. Thank you so much, and thank you for the indulgence of extra time.
Thank you.
The next panel will be Roberto Rodriguez, Marybel Lopez, and Smith Mallory. M. Smith Mallory, thank you. Please come up to the table if you heard your name.
Hello? Okay. I’m not going to take up much of your time, because a lot of what I would have wanted to address has already been. And so, at this point, it would just be to kind of like reiterate a lot of the things that’s been said, like in a bullet point kind of manner. Regarding the housing with HPD, it appears to me that they were elaborating a lot on personal property owners that accepted the program. However, I do know of a lot of addresses under HPD Housing that HPD owns that’s been being warehoused for quite some time, the apartments. And a lot of the buildings, the tenants were promised that they were going to be offered to convert them to TIL, and that went on for about a 10-year time span. Since then, tenants have been moved out of those dwellings, and those dwellings are sitting there, vacant and abandoned now. Something hard for me to believe and understand, especially with this, you know, housing crisis going on right now. You know, so much has been touched on already that, at this point, I almost feel like I like to offer my services to any agencies that may need help. One of my greatest quotes, especially at a time like this, would be from John F. Kennedy in his “Ask not what your country can do for you, but what are you willing to do, you know, for your country?” There’s a lot that needs to be done, because there’s a lot that has gotten out of hand. There's a lot that needs to be done because there's a lot that has gotten out of hand. And ultimately, with them saying that, you know, that the number count with the housing that's been sitting vacant and abandoned, well, all of these many of people that have been residentially displaced for one reason or an unfortunate another, I still don't understand it when there's been developments going on, so much all around us that is to my understanding that the city might be caving in because there's too much weight on it. A lot of this housing, I know, was erected and renovated, government funding, with a lot of residents that are displaced, that government funding is their tax money. So I clearly don't understand how they could be priced out of housing when a great deal of their tax money is in the pot of the funding that went into erecting this real estate or renovating the real estate, a lot of which was confiscated from people who were housed in what was confiscated. And unfortunately, they have been sheltered. I know people that spend in shelters for a 10- to 15-year time span, and it's something about that humanly that I cannot absorb because these are from babies to senior-age people. A lot of the adults, working-class people, it is really a bizarre situation, and, you know, it's so ironic because it's a matter that can be easily fixed, it can be fixed. If real estate is being built all around us, and it's not with out-of-pocket money to the developers that's building, and it's a lot of people that are not even from the city that's being housed, I really do not understand why there are people born and raised there, oops, who are residentially displaced with tax money that has been put into the pot, not only from themselves, myself, my parents, my grandparents, and so forth and on. The warehousing that has been going on with a lot of the real estate in this city is bizarre. And it's real estate that's just been sitting there. I don't believe it's in that much of a deplorable condition that citizens cannot occupy it. And then with the vacant and abandonment that went on throughout the city, I don't understand why there wasn't such a program put into place where the residents of the communities weren't offered the property to renovate it with the same money that was given to other people to manage it. You know, I believe that people would have known better how to manage their own communities if they had the means to do so. There's so much that has been discussed here, it's shivering to me. And I'm not going to take up much more of your time because I know the position of this, it's the work that I do. I'm going to say I appreciate you guys for listening. I appreciate, you know, the raised concerns. I appreciate your highlights. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you.
I appreciate the assertiveness. You have my name. You have my number. The only thing I can do now is offer myself.
Thank you.
In any kind of way, including in the way of taking inventory of these vacancies and this abandonment, because, you know, a great job can be done by one person sometime alone. I do it all the time because my father said, "When you want something done right, do it yourself." It's too big of a job, though, and it would never get done if only a tiny bit of people.
All right. Thank you so much.
I thank you guys a great deal, and you guys have a nice day. Yeah, I said I refuse to put your, I mean, it's somebody that said.
It's okay.
So, you know, my name, my concerns, and my hope.
Thank you.
Because this is insane. Thank you, guys. Have a nice day.
Next on Zoom will be Elise Golden, followed by Kanine.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Elise Golden. I'm the Community Land Trust Campaign Organizer at the New Economy Project, which is an organization working with community groups to build a just economy that works for all based on cooperation, equity, social and racial justice, and ecological sustainability. So among our activities, we are the founding member and co-coordinator of Nicely, which is the Coalition of Community Land Trust, which we know to be a strategy to preserve permanently affordable housing and ensure equitable, community-led decision-making over land use in New York City. So we've been working with hundreds of groups across the city to organize and support of the Community Land Act, which includes COPA and the Public Land for Public Good Bill, as well as abolishing the tax lien sale as ways to combat speculation and bring land and housing into community ownership. And we want to testify today in support of Intros 195 and 352, which would give the city's tenants and community groups additional tools to combat warehousing, as well as build community ownership and support tenant organizing in buildings. We know that thousands of apartments are being warehoused after the 2019 rent laws as ways to deregulate apartments and speculate on buildings. And we know that Intro 195 and 352 would shed light on this growing problem by requiring property owners to register units and for HPD to actually inspect dwellings where there are hazardous conditions. So tenants deserve to have information about and to have actual remediation of these conditions and to know whether they're living next to a mold-infested unit or above an apartment without safety, you know, fire safety protections.
Time expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And also on Zoom, Kanine.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you, okay, great. I'm actually a few steps away from City Hall, so I could actually do this in person. Is that possible? I'm literally like a block away.
Hi, I believe you may be the last person, so preferably we can hear your testimony now.
Okay. Yeah, for some reason, it won't let me turn on my camera, so, okay. Yeah, I mean, I've just been listening to everything all day, and I, I feel like there, for the NYPD, there is a civilian complaint review board. I feel like, where, where are the protection? I mean, I'm just asking more questions. I think all the testimony is extremely clear that, that there's a huge gap between the issues that people are facing and the inaction of our local officials and then also in Albany. And I think this has been going on for decades. I think it's only exacerbated by the, quote, "migrant crisis." I just want answers. I just want to know what, you know, clearly nothing has really been done, but what is actually going to be done? I was a New York City public education teacher for over 15 years, and when these buildings have the issues that they have, the children show up the way they show up. So these issues of housing aren't just isolated as housing issues, they also end up being behavioral issues or high absenteeism in the classroom as a teacher. They also impact the criminal justice system. When people are stressed and tired, they lash out on people that they live with, so domestic violence goes up. There's so many ways in which, if we look at this intersectionally, not only is it taxation with that representation, it also is creating a lot of harm and a lot of ways in which also impact mental health, impact people's inability to show up on time for work or be clear and focused at work.
Time expired.
There's so many ways in which the productivity level of New Yorkers would increase if, again, their shelter, which is, you know, one of the basic needs of society, was met. I live in a building owned by Hub NYC. You know, I live next to an apartment that's also been vacant, and they say that it's vacant because of electrical issues. What does that mean? At any given time, could there be a fire in that apartment? Like, the apartment's been vacant for several months. HPD does nothing about that. You know, so I'm just, I, I think it's great that we get to talk, right, and we get to say our issues, but these are horrifying issues, and I would like to know that our tax dollars ensures that this doesn't happen. People are getting cancer, right? People are dying, right? People are getting rat bites, right? Like, I've dealt with children who have sepsis, I've dealt with children that have scabies, you know? So I'm just confused as to how many more decades are we as a society, and we specifically in New York City, going to allow so many people to suffer in silence? And we know that people are too busy working to then put it on us to organize tenant associations. That's exhausting. And then what about the elderly? Do they have time or the energy or even the memory capacity or cognitive ability? What about the disabled people? So to sit there and make it so that we, as tenants, have to form tenant associations, clearly in vain, because there have been several tenant associations that have testified throughout today, right? So what, clearly it's not, they're doing their best, but clearly it's in vain, right? Because the powers that be, that are the money landlords, that can have the lawyers, right, and write the laws and buy out some of you, some of the city council and whoever else is supposed to do the oversight, can sit there and make it so that these people, again, continue to be bitten by rats, and then the children end up being absent and failing, failing tests and, you know, starting fights in schools. I mean, this is what actually happens. This is what neglecting housing actually looks like. I'm done speaking.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Kanine, and I look forward to continuing the conversation with you because the passion that you have is one that is shared by a lot of folks who are here today, and, you know, it's collective action is difficult, but that's, that's why we're here and that's why we're pushing for reform. So thank you so much for participating today.
Oh, yes, and it's on behalf of my organization, which is called Black Issues Issues, and it's not just the black issues, but specifically, a lot of these issues detrimentally and disproportionately impact the black community. And when you think of the wealth gap, you think of the education gap, when you think of all of these gaps, right? Like, how does housing that exacerbate those gaps, Black Issues Issues, and sometimes solutions?
Understood. Thank you.
Alex Young, Pamela Herrera, Anne Korchak, Ilan Rabinovich, Malcolm Gibbs, Guy Yedwab, Edward Koenig. This concludes the public testimony. If we'd inadvertently forgotten to call on someone to testify, can you please raise your hand using the Zoom function or identify yourself in the audience today?
All right. Well, with that, I want to thank all of the residents and advocates who came and joined this hearing, who pushed for legislation to address a challenge that we're having in the city of New York. I want to thank the administration especially for staying here. Deputy Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner, and your teams, Intergov, thank you so much for being here. And with that, we look forward to further discussions on these bills and on our advocacy in Albany. And with that, this hearing is adjourned.